Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, December the 14th. We will begin this meeting by asking our clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo? I can see you, but I can't hear you, so we'll wait for your audio. Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger? And Piedmont Smith?
Here.
And Councilmember Rallo, do we have your sound in yet? Okay, we still can't hear you, but I'll note that you're here. Thank you.
All right, very good. To summarize our agenda, for legislation for second readings and resolutions this evening, we have Resolution 22-20, a resolution responding to Monroe County Board of Commissioners Ordinance 2022-46, followed by Ordinance 22-36, to amend Title 20, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding proposal to amend Chapter 20.02 zoning districts and related sections to establish an overlay district and related development standards for the Hopewell neighborhood. That is followed by Ordinance 22-37, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by adding the TRANSFORM Redevelopment Overlay, the TRO, to certain below-described property. And then our legislation for first reading this evening, Ordinance 22-38, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 87.12 acre property from mixed-use employment, ME, to mixed-use institutional, MI, regarding the northeast corner of West Fullerton Pike and State Road 37, Monroe County government petitioner. That is followed by appropriation ordinance 22-06, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, general revenue annual appropriation bonds of 2022, together with all investments earning their earnings thereon for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to the costs of certain capital improvements for public safety facilities and paying miscellaneous costs in connection with the foregoing and the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof, and approving an agreement of the Bloomington Redevelopment Commission to purchase certain property. That then is followed by Ordinance 22-40, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 22-26, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect changes due to the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bloomington and local 2487 CBMC, AFSMI, and also a change affecting one additional job title. At the end of our first readings, we will then discuss our council schedule, which will include the 2023 annual council legislative schedule. And at that point in our meeting this evening, we will adjourn. So first, we are going to need to put our legislation for second readings and resolutions on the table. And if our parliamentarian is unable to mute at this point, Councilmember Rallo, are you available?
I am.
Very good. We can hear your voice.
Are we introducing legislation?
For second readings and resolutions, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry about my microphone. Madam President, I move that Resolution 2220 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye. Oh, we can't do that. Wait a minute, we've got virtual. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And will a clerk please read?
Resolution 2220, a resolution responding to Monroe County Board of Commissioners Ordinance 2022-46. The synopsis is as follows: Resolution 2220 expresses the Bloomington Common Council's support for the formation of a capital improvement board in furtherance of the convention center expansion project.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2220 be adopted.
Second.
All right, very good. And if you don't mind, Mr. Lucas, do you mind giving us a brief introduction?
Yes, happy to. Stephen Lucas, council administrator and attorney. Resolution 2220 gives the council an opportunity to respond to an action taken about a month ago by the County Board of Commissioners, which is referenced in the title. The Board of Commissioners adopted their ordinance 2022-46, which created a CIB on the condition that the city expressed support for the creation of such an entity to oversee and manage the convention center expansion project. The resolution itself recites a bit of the history of the food and beverage tax, which was enabled several years ago to fund the expansion of the convention center. I won't repeat that. Most recently, folks from the city and county have been meeting to figure out what sort of entity will oversee the operations and the expansion project itself. The city administration has expressed support for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity. Both the county commissioners and the county council now have expressed support for a capital improvement board, which is an entity provided for in state law that many other communities use to manage their convention centers. And so this resolution tonight gives the council an opportunity to weigh in on this question. It expresses support for the creation of a capital improvement board and encourages the city administration to continue working with folks in the county to address any remaining questions left open after the Commissioners' Ordinance 2022-46 was adopted. We have several folks here from the relevant bodies and interested members of the community who know much more about the project than I do, who've been working on this for several years, and I'm hopeful that they'll be able to chime in with their perspectives and answer questions. I believe we have Mary Catherine Carmichael here on Zoom. I don't see her in the room. From the administration, in case there are questions, there she is. So that's a very brief rundown. I won't belabor the point. Happy to go into more detail. Folks have it. Your packet materials attempted to provide you a sense of what a CIB is and what authority it has. Again, I think folks from the city administration who have been looking at this issue, Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel, may also be able to answer questions, if you have them, on how a CIB might operate versus a 501(c)(3). But essentially, this resolution expresses the council's support for the creation of a CIB to further the convention center expansion project and recognizes that there are still unanswered questions that may need to be addressed and calls on the city administration to continue working with our colleagues in the county to answer those, possibly through the creation of a, any needed interlocal agreements. I think I'll leave it at that, and...
Thank you. Before we go to council questions on this matter, are there representatives either from the city, I see Mary Catherine Carmichael here, apparently you are the spokesperson for the city on this, and then also Mr. Cockrell from the county, if either one of you would like to make some introductory remarks before we turn it over to council for questions? I see Mary Catherine's hand up. Please.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Mary Catherine Carmichael, Director of Public Engagement, Office of the Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know we've been in contact on this topic quite a bit over the last several months. I'm joined this evening by Corporation Counsel Beth Kate, who's also here to try to be of assistance as we discuss this issue, answer questions as they come up. Pardon me, I have a little frog in my throat tonight. You've already received a series of correspondence from the administration outlining our thoughts on the relative workability of a CIB versus a 501(c)(3) for the expansion of the convention center. We remain committed to that project, and that commitment includes 100% of the city's food and beverage tax revenues. We really want to see this project go forward. I think the topic and the issue in question is simply what form of organization is it going to take to get that done most effectively? And it's after literally six years of study and talk, we've come to the conclusion that our preference would certainly be and strongly be a 501(c)(3), but we understand, too, that well-intentioned people can have different opinions, and that's okay. So happy to be with you this evening to further discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you. Corporation, Ms. Kate, do you want to say, add anything more to that, or?
I don't know.
Okay, very good. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and I'm here mainly to listen and answer questions as it sees fit, but I, you know, I think some of us in this room have been part of this conversation of a convention center and how it moves on and moves forward since, I think, the beginning. I think, I was not here in the beginning, but there are members of the audience, but I was really involved in the negotiations that were going on right before COVID hit and everything got put on hold. And at that point in time, we were talking about a CIB. And so I see this motion and what the Commissioners did as just kind of trying to continue from where we left off in 2019, 2000, beginning of 2020. So again, I'm here mainly to answer questions, but if you have any, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you so much. We are back to council for any questions that we may have, or anyone here who can answer them for us.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to introduce the amendment now or to wait?
Certainly, if you would like to do that before we get started.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Amendment 1 to Resolution 2220.
Second.
So this amendment puts some conditions on the common council's support for a CIB, and the conditions reflect what the mayor's administration said about use of a CIB in their memo of November 23rd. In addition to that, well, except for two items, so all of these, it's organized a little bit differently and more concisely, I think. In Exhibit A, you can see that this was in the second packet addendum that went out this afternoon. I apologize that it was not sent out sooner. I guess I was waiting for somebody else to do something, but never do that. So I am personally not a great fan of convention center expansion, but I do feel like the food and beverage tax was passed, and now we need to actually use the funds that we have collected for the purposes that were stated when the tax was passed. So these, the Exhibit A, which would hereby be attached to the resolution, lists, as I said, the conditions that the mayor's office had listed on November 23rd, with the exception of one other thing that, two other things that were in the November 23rd memo, which is that the city controller shall be the controller for the CIB. I feel like the CIB could determine that. It does make sense, the city controller would hit the ground running, but seems to me the CIB could determine that. And then the other, the other item is to have an independent annual audit rather than the State Board of Accounts audit. And I did hear back from Corporation Counsel Kate about that, and she explained that it was because State Board of Accounts is very overworked and doesn't get to audits in a timely manner. But again, I feel like that's an item of detail that the CIB could decide for themselves.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do not have in writing the amendment. It's not in the packet that was sent. It's not in this packet either. Is it a separate document?
There's a copy coming to you.
So it was only, when was it released? This afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So let me just see if I, did I add anything else? Oh, and the other thing, other than what was in the mayor's memo, minus those two items, the other thing that I added in Exhibit A was the representation on the composition of the CIB shall be as the county Commissioners' ordinance indicated, with equal representation from city and county, three and three, and then the seventh member chosen by the remaining members. So I wanted to put that in writing as well. So I'm sorry, that was kind of a train of consciousness introduction, so I'm sorry it wasn't more concise, but that is what Amendment 1 is about.
All right, thank you. And given the lateness of the hour that this was presented, I'm hoping that members of the public, especially from the county, have gotten a copy of this. Would anyone from the county wish to speak to Amendment 1, particularly hearing from Mr. Cockrell, I believe? Have you had an opportunity to review this?
Very briefly, but I, but I think...
And again, if you can just identify yourself.
Jeff Cockrell with the County Legal Department. I got a copy of this a few minutes ago. There's not a whole lot of surprising things on it. Actually, the most surprising thing is, and I'll go back to where the negotiations ended in 1920, was that that seventh member of the CIB was a real contentious point, and this kind of, with this and the Commissioners' resolution, kind of clarifies it. I'd also have a couple of comments. The first is in Number 1 with the CVC appointments. This has always been kind of a struggle in the way it's, the language here makes it difficult because that's not a locally designated who gets to make those appointments. Those are found in the state code. And so I don't know how you just give those appointments without changing that state code. So I think that is a concern that would need to be worked out in a way that's different than the language in this, if it gets worked out. But I just wanted to point that the state code says the county council makes three appointments, two of which have to be from a hotel or other type of organization with at least 40 beds. The county commissioners make two appointments. One has to be the, associated with the IMU, and the other one has to be of a hotel with 40 or more beds. So there's kind of a limited pool anyway, but that certainly is in code. And I think if you combine that with kind of the last second, the last statement of no, if no agreement can be reached, the parties must then establish some other alternative structure, I think there's a, there needs to be a realization that, hey, you know, one part of this is definitely against state code, and that has to be worked out. The other thing that I, I'm wondering if in Number 4, when you talk about necessarily, the necessary interlocal agreements to achieve the foregoing components and additional components such as staffing needs of the CVC and CIB, if that's more of a, hey, we're going to agree to build the budget, you know, kind of before the budget sessions, looking at our revenues and putting that, so then the CIB would then have an opportunity to hire their own staffing and make those determinations for themselves, or if that's something different. That would be a question I would have about this amendment.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Are we ready for council questions regarding?
Can I just, I'm sorry, as the sponsor of the amendment, I didn't quite catch what that last point was that you were questioning, Mr. Cockrell. Sorry.
The state code says that the, and I'm paraphrasing, I did not read the state code right before it came, that in the CIB is that they have the authority to hire the necessary people that they need to do their operations, essentially. And so what I'm wondering is, when we put this as a, it's caged in an interlocal agreement, I'm wondering if that's just not merely a, we're going to agree to approve a joint budget with the city council and the county council approving that budget, kind of off schedule, right? I know our county council does budgeting, and you guys do budgeting in the fall. If we create a CIB in January, whether we would go ahead and have both city councils kind of work with the CIB to create a budget that they could utilize, as opposed to making interlocal agreements about the staff? That's purely my question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does anyone from the administration wish to respond to what we've just heard from Mr. Cockrell? I see Ms. Kate approaching the podium.
Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel, just on the first point that Mr. Cockrell raised about the statutory provisions about CVC appointments, he and I have talked a little bit about this, that's our reference to interlocal agreements, some of the terms being worked out in that way would allow us to sit down and talk through how recommendations from the city would contribute to the appointments that are specified in the code. So that's one of those things that an interlocal agreement would allow us to work through. So obviously, everyone who's got statutory authority to make appointments is going to make appointments on some basis, and as he and I discussed a little bit earlier, you know, recommendations from the city can be obviously one of the bases for those decisions. So...
All right, very good. I see someone else maybe want to approach about this particular issue that we're discussing with Point 1 or Point 4.
My name is Mike Campbell. I'm the president of the Convention and Visitors Commission, so you can see why we would be interested in commenting on at least Point 1. So, and I did want to go ahead and talk through some of that with the statute, and I know we're aware of that, but there is a very limited pool of hoteliers that would fit the parameters for selection and serving on this commission. So, and the vast majority of those are within the city limits. One point that has not been brought up is approval of the budget by both bodies, both the city and the county, in Point 1, and that I would certainly want to know how that would operate, if one body agreed one way and one didn't another, how that would work since the tax was collected by the county. And then in Point Number 3, where it says the county's commitment to continued appropriation of innkeeper's tax proceeds to the CIB to fund CC operations and maintenance leaves off a very important point. A lot of the funding is also for sales, marketing, and attraction of those conventions that would be coming there, and is not enumerated here. So some language in there that would talk about the other piece of that, which we currently use and fund, so that we could attract those conventions to an expanded convention center.
All right, thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome. Here for questions if...
Very good. Back to council now for any questions. Oh, Mary, Ms. Carmichael, please.
Thank you, Beth, and Sandberg. Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. Just want to remind everybody that the memo that Councilmember Piedmont Smith referenced, in that memo, we listed items that had been included in the 2019 negotiations but had been dropped from the county Commissioners' CIB resolution that they passed. And just as a reminder, that memo landed on the conclusion that even with those amendments, a CIB puts the city at a disadvantage and is not what we would recommend or prefer. So just want to make that point of clarification. Thank you.
All right. Now, are we back to the council for any questions, either for the sponsor or for the individuals that we've heard from? Councilmember Volin?
Before I ask a question, I just need to say that I am overwhelmed by this amendment, having just seen it. I do not understand, I haven't had a chance to read it. I don't think that the presentation that the sponsor made was sufficient, so I'm going to be playing catch-up here, but the bottom line is, I simply don't understand how this impacts the current situation that the county and the administration, you know, I don't understand it. So...
Is there a question in there?
I wish I had one right now. I did want to start with Point 3, what the gentleman from the CVC said. So it says, "County commitment to continued appropriation of innkeeper's tax proceeds to the CIB to fund CC operations and maintenance." This implies to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that there wasn't a guarantee that the innkeeper's tax would continue to go to a convention center under the terms without this amendment. Is that correct? Would it not be guaranteed that innkeeper's tax proceeds would go to the convention center?
And again, please identify yourself every time you come up.
Certainly. So Mike Campbell, president of the Convention and Visitors Commission, and actually, there is a Monroe County statute that points to the ongoing nature of the innkeeper's tax collection and support for a convention center. This was adopted in 1990, and since 1990, the Convention and Visitors Commission, through the use of the innkeeper's tax, has been the sole funding member of the existing convention center for all upkeep. And then that's in part of the ordinance that has not been rescinded, that talks about a continued commitment to the convention center. In addition...
Wait, 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 wait. The ordinance that exists now or the ordinance that's on the table?
No, the ordinance that exists now...
So just to be clear, the ordinance that exists now continues to call for...
Yes, continued...
Those dollars to continue to fund the convention center?
Yes, but not in such a restrictive nature as what was in the amendment. And that was part of my concern, is that in the amendment, it left off marketing and some other attraction for convention centers that was not present in the ordinance.
So to be clear, you would like to see Section 3 amended to add other expenses that are related to the convention center that are not explicitly identified here?
Right. So it's not just about a broken sink, but also the attraction and the outgoing marketing and the support and the staffing to attract that.
That is understandable. But to follow up, without this amendment, would somehow innkeeper's tax dollars be withholdable from the convention center for any reason by anybody? Or do they have to be spent on convention center expenses? That's, to me, the only reason why such a clause would be required.
So if you look at County Ordinance 92-40, it outlines, and this was effective July 1, 1990, and I believe is still the rule in effect from everything I've seen, that points to 40% of gross revenues from innkeeper's tax is in support of the convention center.
So it's still required as a result, just as relative, Ordinance, what was the number again?
92-40.
92, 1992, or 1990-240?
The only thing I see is 92-40 in the ordinance.
Okay, so how would an ordinance passed in 1992 be effective as of 1990?
So this repeals the Ordinance 90-13.
Very good. Okay.
And it's Ordinance 92-40.
Thank you. To the sponsor, why is it that we needed to be specific about this in this amendment, since it was required that those dollars would continue to go to the convention center anyway?
Well, for one thing, the county could change their code, but mainly, it's in there because it was in the mayor's memo, and I was trying to get everybody on board to move ahead.
So you're saying that the mayor's memo was concerned about those dollars potentially being withheld in case of a dispute, and this ensures it?
I believe so, yes.
Does that reflect the understanding of the administration? Is that why, would, I mean...
And if anybody from the administration would like to come on and speak to that question? I also see some head shakes going on out there with some of the county...
Yeah, would Mary Catherine Carmichael have something to say on this?
Yeah, I think Beth is probably a little bit better positioned to answer that, but yes, and I think that, you know, we obviously take our approach to this is to do everything we can to protect the city, and that would certainly be one thing that we'd want to address. So I'll leave it there.
Ms. Kate?
Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel. I think the list of things that was in, that were in the memo of November 23rd, which is what Councilmember Piedmont Smith was drawing on for the amendment... for the amendment, reflect things that both, as I understand it, I wasn't here six years ago and throughout the earlier portions of these negotiations, but were all things that people were actively talking about to try to ensure that both the county and the city were fully committed to the expansion of the convention center and the project. And so, that list that you're seeing in the memo and the Councilmember Piedmont Smith drew on is stating out loud the various ways that both balance could be achieved in governance, if you will, and in the project, and also that level of commitment being evidenced. Again, I'll just reiterate what Mary Catherine said earlier. Obviously, you can see in the memo that the administration's not preferring this route, but that list is a list of things that we had said would be essential if it was going that route.
Thank you. That clarifies it. Madam President, thanks for the extended opportunity to ask questions.
Was there anyone else? I saw somebody get up. Mr. Cockrell, did you want to respond to Mr. Volan's question?
Jeff Cockrell, County Attorney. I was just conferring with Mike Campbell because I think it's important to note that innkeeper's tax has to be approved for spending by the Convention and Visitors Commission before it can be spent anywhere. So, you know, if you look at Number One, which, you know, is not with the statute, but I think, you know, I've talked with Beth Kate, and we're thinking about ways that maybe we could utilize that. So, if that were in place, it would be, you know, kind of, you've already had an opportunity to say what that, through your appointments, to say what that money could be spent on. So.
Does that clarify, or do you want to ask a follow-up?
I'm sorry, I'm just, you should just pass me over for now. Like, I think I'll have, I may have to ask Mr. Cockrell again. I didn't parse it. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilmembers Campbell, are you a question?
Yes, thank you. This is a point I thought I understood, and now I'm not sure I do. So, I need to circle back. Still regarding Roman numeral three, county commitment to continued appropriation of innkeeper's tax and so forth. Mr. Campbell, did I understand correctly that current county statutes allow the money to be supportive of the CVC, but am I understanding correctly that you would like to see it more explicitly state that it could be used for outreach efforts and marketing efforts?
Well, it's what, it's, what I asked for was for it to reflect what is actually happening now. And with a much larger organization, certainly, there would be additional costs. And we've talked through that with the county and the city, and we've expressed our support for this all along. What, rather than earmarking it simply for operations and
Maintenance.
Maintenance. I would want to make sure that the other pieces of that, such as marketing, staffing for convention sales team, collateral material, destination marketing, all of that falls into the same boat as far as support for a convention center. So, I don't necessarily want us to be so restrictive to say we could only spend it on these small items when we don't know what things will look like 10 years from now. But we know we will continue to support the convention center with the use of the innkeeper's tax.
So, and may I follow up for some additional clarity here. So, to fund convention center operations and maintenance, and what I'm hearing you say is that additional language, operations and maintenance, marketing, and convention sales, that kind of language would be helpful here.
Yes. Or if you just want to put et cetera, that would be, that would be fine, too.
Et cetera in a legal document makes me a little nervous.
But yes, I think that captures the spirit of it, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from counsel? And perplexed. Yeah, we're on the amendment. Oh, yes, Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. I know it's kind of hard to see sometimes on the screen. I had a question for the sponsor. In the memo from the administration, there are 15 items, I think, and in your amendments, there are not 15 items. So, just wondering why you chose to leave out some of those items in the memo. And a follow-up, I think for me, this is much, too much information to try to decide overnight. But if Councilmember Piedmont Smith could answer that question.
Yes. So, the reason I consolidated some of the items from the November 23 memo from the mayor's administration is just to make it easier to read, basically. I was trying to make it easier, hopefully that is the case. But rather than listing 15 things, I mean, with a lot of repetition of, you know, the CIB shall get county and city permission to do this, and then the CIB shall get county and city permission to do this, and then, you know, I just said, the city and county shall, you know, sign off on and then put a list of things. So, it, as I mentioned at the outset, the only two things from the memo that I did not include was that the city controller automatically be the controller for the CIB, and that the CIB engage an independent auditor to do annual audits rather than the State Board of Accounts. I thought those two items could just be left up to the CIB to decide.
Thank you.
All right. Is that, did you have a follow-up, or was that it?
That is it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Flair?
Thank you. In reviewing the list from the mayor's administration memo on November 23, there was an item that I, another item you didn't mention, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, that I think is not included in the amendment.
Yeah, somewhere here.
And that's item number 10, which says expeditious transfer to the CIB of all city and county property purchased via the innkeeper's or food and beverage taxes, i.e. no later than 90 days after establishment of the CIB or the CIB dissolves. So, sort of a conditional transfer of properties acquired over the years from these two funding sources. Was that intentionally left out, and can you speak to that?
Thank you. No, that was unintentionally left out. So, I would propose to put that back in. My bad.
Thank you. I suppose if it's not, if it's okay with the chair, I would be curious to hear the county's perspective on that particular possibility of addition, and the city's, why they found that term essential as well.
Well, I think that we would have a real problem with that addition for mainly the following reason. We purchased all the property, and we still have debt on all the property through a, through the lease purchase statute, which requires, so technically, right now, the county is not the fee title owner to most of the property we're talking about because we have debt on it. Once that debt is paid off, by statute, it has to go back to the county. So, it would be tough for us to transfer title without paying off the debt. Certainly, that would be really hard to do within a 90-day period. I would also say that there are, at least in my mind, some questions because we did not purchase, we had purchased, we have property north of town where the current visitor center is that was bought with food and beverage tax, and I'm not sure that's part of this convention center expansion. I also think that there should be a conversation about looking at all the property there. I think particularly the ones on the southern end of that block to see what is the, what is the projected future use of those properties. Sure, when we bought it, and I think to this day, we think that that is for a convention center expansion at some point in time. However, if you look at, when we went through the process, we looked at where we were going to expand to. And again, the city was gracious enough to buy the lot north of the street. I, sorry, my maps, my map in my mind's gone. North of Third Street, what I refer to as the bunker building. Ironically, that was not, in my mind, that was not purchased with either innkeeper's tax or food and beverage. So, that would not be included in what you guys are putting. But when they purchased that property, I think it made that expansion all the way to the south, something that we probably need to rethink and think about if that's still appropriate. So, those are kind of my comments on that.
Thank you. And any input from the city administration on that? Why it found it as an essential component in its memo on the 23rd? Thank you.
Ms. Carmichael?
Thank you. Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. So, we bought that land with the intention, of course, of expanding in that direction. That was the recommendation of the group that was made up of both city, county, and community representatives back in 2019. The idea was a bridge over Third Street. But I do have to just circle back for one quick second and say, we can go through all these machinations to get into a CIB agreement that we could possibly make work, but we have an opportunity here to build to suit with a 501(c)(3). So, again, the administration does not support the idea of a CIB at this time.
Thank you.
First round questions from counsel. Councilmember Smith?
Just to clarify, for, I'm looking at the amendment, and it talks about in Number One, equal representation in the appointments. And then, I'm looking at Indiana Code that was in a packet, 3610-8-4, about the board is composed of seven members. Am I misunderstanding that the state code tells us how to do the memberships of the board, or are those two different items, are those two different entities, that the commission in the amendment Number One or in the Indiana Code, is, are those two different things?
Mr. Cockrell?
Mr. Cockrell, clarify me.
Yes, the Convention and Visitors Commission is found in the portion of the code dealing with local taxes in Chapter Six of the Indiana Code. That is specifically tied to innkeeper's tax. I think the, I don't have a copy of what's in your code, but I believe it's probably about the capital improvement board, which is a, which would be a totally separate entity than the Convention and Visitors Commission.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, first round questions from counsel before we come back to Councilmember Volan. Councilmember Rallo, do you have a question? Or Councilmember Sims? Yes, Councilmember Sims?
I'm not quite sure how to couch this. Maybe it's just a clarification for me that somewhat could straighten out for me. But the term operations, I would think that would include marketing and those sorts of things. Is that not the case? And if it isn't, could someone explain to me, what does operations mean if it doesn't include marketing and tracking convention? Is that not operations, or am I not saying this correctly? That's been budgeted for previous years, and you've been allowed to operate anyway.
Right.
Okay.
So, yes. So, you could certainly interpret it that way. You can interpret it a different way and say that that monies are only for the operations and staffing to maintain the building and the business within it, not the business to get it here. And so, that might be done by a different entity as well. So, currently, Visit Bloomington has a convention salesperson. I would think that would fall within the purview of supporting the convention center.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Seeing no other first round questions, Councilmember Volan?
Okay, so, I've finally found in my email the memo from the administration from Mary Catherine Carmichael dated November 23, and hastily compared it to Exhibit A of the amendment. They have 15 bullet points in their memo, and from what I can see, every bullet point has been addressed in Exhibit A except Items 10, 11, and 12. And there's one item here that's not present in their, in the administration's bullet points. Item 10 is the, that the administration expected was expeditious transfer to the CIB of all property purchased via innkeeper's or food and beverage taxes or the CIB dissolves. 11 was appointment of the city controller as the statutory controller for the CIB, and 12 was authorization by both city and county for the CIB to have outside independent audits. So, I don't know yet to whom to ask this question. I feel like I need to ask both the sponsor and the administration of their intent, but let me start with the sponsor. Did you intend to leave out Items 10, 11, and 12 from the exhibit, or are they included here in a fashion that I have yet to determine?
First of all, I do apologize that this was so late. I totally understand that it's a lot to digest. Items 11 and 12 from the administration's memo, I purposely left out. Item 10, I accidentally left out, but maybe that's a good thing because the county has expressed that they're, they find it very problematic, this item number 10. So, that's my explanation.
Thank you for that. I'm just going to say now that I really want an explanation for each point, and to fully understand the stances, since this, we're negotiating this on the fly here. But I'd like to ask the administration, did you have a chance to see Exhibit A of this amendment, and do you have a specific reaction to those three items that the sponsor left out? Yes, please.
Ms. Carmichael?
Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. Thank you for the question. I want to point out again that that memo of the 23rd was listing the things that were left out of the resolution that was passed by the county commissioners. It was not intended as a roadmap to drive us to an ideal CIB, again, because we don't feel that a CIB is the appropriate way to get from Point A to Point B, which is a built convention center expansion. There are several roadblocks, but I think the crux of the matter is, it puts the city at a disadvantage because we are going to have a great majority of the investment, and I'm sure there'll be some pushback on that. But, but, and so, we feel that the organ, the way the CIB is set up does not give us enough control and power long-term to be able to really guide this the way we'd like to see. So, that's, that's a real sticking point.
Context, my question for you, which is, in order to fully understand why the 501(c)(3) is superior in the administration's mind, I'm having to ask these questions. You shouldn't interpret this as taking one side or the other because I frankly still just don't understand the question fully. Does that make sense, Ms. Carmichael?
Sure, sure.
Okay. So, having said that, you're saying that even if those items that we just discussed were included in this amendment, the administration would find the CIB to be an inferior solution, but the administration would certainly prefer these items to be in the CIB if it were to come to pass? Do I have that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll have further questions, but that's enough for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Flair?
Yes, thank you. I have a big picture question and then a more of a detailed question. So, as I read Ordinance 2246 from the county, Section Seven, this ordinance takes effect upon passage by the commissioners and the commissioners' receipt of the City of Bloomington mayor and common councils' agreement with the terms of this ordinance. So, in my mind, that begets the question, what if this council passes an amended version, or what if the office of the mayor declines to support it? Does that end this?
Yes, Mr. Cockrell?
Does my question make sense?
Your question makes sense. I hope my answer makes sense. I think what would happen, it was, it would end this rendition of that capital improvement board ordinance. There's nothing that would prohibit the commissioners from passing another capital improvement board ordinance in the future. I think this is an attempt to keep this conversation moving. I think we've gotten some feedback from, from the administration. You know, I think we would probably just continue trying to figure out where You know, I, I think we would probably just continue trying to figure out where we're going as opposed to taking a step forward, is, I guess, in my mind, where, where we'd be.
Does the commissioner have any addition to that, or no? Commissioner Thomas?
Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. We heard from a lot of folks that this progress, this project should progress and move forward. This was, the resolution was our effort to do so, and to do so expeditiously. And that is not something where, let me put it this way, we recognize that there clearly had to be a subsequent memorandum of understanding between the city and the county to continue forward progress, but this was our way of saying, let's move forward, because that's what folks were asking us to do, and we did so. So it doesn't mean that a subsequent agreement isn't needed. You should take that CIB proposal as what it is. It's a proposal to move forward with the CIB and to keep, keep going forward, rather than muddying the waters with alternate proposals. But to work on MOUs and to work out what has to be worked out, because we know there are details that still have to be done.
Thank you. And I have a question on a different topic, not a follow-up. Would you rather I wait?
Let's go to Councilmember Flaherty, and then we'll.
Wind our way back.
Thank you. I have similar questions that I'll just follow up on. Section 6 of the same ordinance from the commissioners says, on a related point, that the formation of the CIB and the need for speedy action, or based on that, this ordinance is, quote, "contingent upon the City of Bloomington's agreement with the terms of this ordinance by January 1, 2023." It seems to me that if we pass this amendment, that we can't assent to that agreement by adding conditions, or can we? Could it still even be valid for us to comply with the terms of the commissioners' ordinance if we amend the conditions upon which we're assenting to a CIB being formed? Yes. Would the passage of Amendment 3 automatically, Amendment 1, I'm sorry, kept talking about bullet item 3, would the passage of Amendment 1 automatically void the offer that was contained in ordinance 2246 from the commissioners? By changing the terms, we aren't agreeing to the terms they laid out, is my point. One could argue perhaps that you're only adding terms, so can we agree to their terms and add more? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. So perhaps.
And who would like to answer that question? I assume that is for the county.
Question, Stephen Lucas, City Council Administrator and Attorney. I think that's a good, good question that Mr. Cockrell may want to respond to. I think as, as drafted, this was an attempt to give the council a chance to express your position, not necessarily to, to essentially, you know, agree with the terms of ordinance 2246 that the commissioners passed. Of course, it could say that if that's, you know, what you want. There's essentially currently one, one operational section of the, the resolution that could be amended to say the council agrees to the terms of ordinance 2246. I think as originally drafted, it more or less does that, though it recognizes there are, I think even, even with the commissioners' ordinance 2246, I think there are unanswered questions that may need to be negotiated through an MOU or interlocal agreement. And so at least the original draft of the resolution, I think, was intended to express the council's support for the creation of a CIB, which I think was the main thrust of the commissioners' ordinance, and, and then it calls for folks to continue working on these details. So I'll let Mr. Cockrell respond to how the county might take it if this Amendment 1 is adopted, and whether he feels like it would void the commissioners' ordinance.
Well, I think the only thing that's going to avoid the commissioners' ordinance is the passage of time without that. You know, I think if you send back an amended version with, with, with these items on it, then the commissioners would have the opportunity to review that and then make a determination whether that fits that statement, and then they would, at a commissioners' meeting, say, yes, it does, or, or no, it does not. I guess, I also heard it kind of in that question, hey, what if, at the end of the day, we don't like the end result, right? And I guess, my feeling is, there is nothing in your consent to the, to the, to the creation of the CIB that would require you to make votes on future things. I mean, there's going to be future budgets that need to be approved. We, the county by itself cannot appropriate, use any of the city's portion of the food and beverage tax without the city agreeing to that, right? And that's, that's, I don't think that's ever going to happen. I think we're going to have to use a vehicle such as a third party to utilize that and let them make the request to us, similar to what we do with dispatch almost. You know, that's still internal within, within, you know, kind of our umbrella. This would be a much more external use, user of these kind of things. The city owns and controls a key piece of property. There's nothing in this ordinance, by you agreeing that this looks good, that would require you at the end of the day to transfer those, right? Those are all going to be worked out in these interlocal agreements we've talked about. So I hear what you're saying, and I would say, as much as I would like this to be the end-all, be-all, and this is how we're going to move forward, there's still a lot of work ahead, and there's a lot of conversations, you know. I threw out a conversation piece earlier today about the land. I think there's a lot of conversations that need to happen. So I hope that answered your question.
Just a brief follow-up. So if there's a lot of conversations and things that need to be figured out, why this ordinance now? Why not wait until we have those things figured out? Clearly, the administration or some folks think that this is a part of the negotiations, and that the city is positioning itself in a worse place in the context of overall trying to figure out that right balance of who's contributing what and whose rights, you know, are protected, that sort of thing. So why come to us with this ordinance if we have so much to figure out? Why not figure out those pieces first?
Well, I guess, I would answer that a couple different ways. The first way is no matter what governing body we use, and I think clearly the county thinks the CIB is the way to go, and I'm not trying to say that that's any different now. All these things are going to be, have to be worked out anyway. Two, I would say, having this body put, put together and helping with making the decisions on what they want, properties, a perfect example, what properties do they foresee that they'll want to be able to use? What is their immediate use? The budget question. What do they see as their needs as far as staffing and things like that? Having that, the sooner we get that group put together, the quicker we can answer a lot of these bigger questions. I think, I think there's a lot of information that that group would, would be able to pull together, and a lot of requests and questions that that group would make, because, you know, at the end of the day, they're going to be the people who are going to manage this. They're the people who are going to be working on the, the construction aspects of this. I think it's getting, getting that group important and in at the ground floor to help form the decisions and form those conversations is important.
And Commissioner Thomas, do you wish to add to that?
Yeah, if I might, thank you. Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. I just, I see the question, and I think the easiest way to, and the clearest way to answer it is this. We were talking about a CIB, then COVID happened, and then when we came back to talk about the convention center again, the administration brought forward this 501(c)(3) idea. A 501(c)(3), unlike a capital improvement board, does not require a public approval, public board, elected board approving budgets. It does not require public meetings. There are issues, there are other issues as well. We put forward our resolution to clearly state, we prefer going on the track of negotiating, because there's still more negotiation, negotiating the CIB. We asked our colleagues on the county council, they agreed. We've, we've heard from the administration, obviously, they prefer a 501(c)(3). Our question to you is, do you prefer that we negotiate on the CIB track or the 501(c)(3) track? Not both, one or the other. We'd like to know where the city's common council stands on this pivotal issue about which are we, which path are we following? They're very different paths. They're not the same.
Thank you. Additional second round questions. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is a question for Commissioner Thomas or Mr. Cockrell, but, so if, if a CIB is created, can you tell me how, how does it work with the existing entity? Or is it just a separate entity that is in charge of building the convention center and getting that going? And then, once that's, once that's finished, does it go away in something else? Or is that, does that exist in, you know, in perpetuity theoretically? And then, is there a working, like, working together with the one that's managing the convention center now? Or is there inherently a conflict in that, like, those two different bodies?
I guess, I think I understand the question. I guess the, the vision, I think, that the county has is that the CIB would control the current convention center and the areas where there would be expansion, including the areas where there'd be an expansion for a hotel. So they would have control, and again, that control is going to have, it's going to take some details to work out because of our debt structure, but they would have control over all that. I think the, the vision I would have is, at least initially, we would assign our management agreement for the, the current convention center, when, when they get control of the property, to the CIB. And so they, it's a perpetual thing. I, we, I think we would envision that they would be the group that handles the convention center, you know, the, you know, the, and we've, with our building corporation, we've kind of had a mini CIB, where, where they're really invested in making sure that the, the building has all the physical maintenance needs it has, and that they, they, if there's questions about, hey, how do we get more, do a better job marketing it and things like that, they've been pretty active in that. That's really outside the scope of what a building corporation does, but it, but I envision the CIB acting a lot like that, where, you know, they come up with the plan, and then they come to the city, they come to the county and say, hey, here's our plan, here's what we think it'll take to fund it, and, and then they would also handle the day-to-day operations and, and work with the, assuming we still have a contractual manager of the, of the bigger facility.
Right. Thank you very much. That was really helpful to clarify that for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to see if Ms. Carmichael, I know she has her hand raised, could also respond to the question that the county responded to about why now? Why does it make sense to have a resolution like this right now?
Thank you. Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. I appreciate the question very much. First of all, I want to say that I think that, that was a little bit of a misrepresentation of the potential for a 501(c)(3). Getting back to that idea of kind of a build-to-suit model, we can build in as much transparency that a, as a CIB would have, so to assume that that would be not subject to public review is, is just simply not accurate. Excuse me. I also want to share just a little history. A 501(c)(3) was being considered back in 2019 on a parallel path with the CIB, so both things were being talked about and considered when things shut down. You know, I tend to believe that the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. We've been discussing this for six years, and we don't have anything to show for it, frankly. So I would say that, well, I'd also point out that the CIB resolution that you're considering from the county was passed with no city input. In fact, it was kind of brought out of the blue an hour before a meeting that we had scheduled with the commissioners. So that causes me personally to have concerns about good faith going forward, and again, cast more doubt on the workability of a CIB structure going forward. Thank you.
Is that an answer for your question, Ms. Rosenbarger? Okay. Any additional questions from council? Councilmember Bolland.
Okay, so in addition to the three points that, from the administration's memo of the 23rd, that were absent from the proposed amendment, I've been struggling to understand this question all along, over the past few months, and the back and forth that it's been experienced. Reading again now the rest of the memo, the only difference I can see between the CIB as proposed by the county and the 501(c)(3) as proposed by the administration of the city is the membership of the Board of Directors. So according to the memo, the 501(c)(3) would have five members of its board elected from the board, four of the directors would be appointed by the mayor, and one would be appointed by the city council. Now, am I, it would have, officer elected, okay, so there'd be five members of the board under this 501(c)(3), and four of them would be appointed by the administration. The only other thing I see here in explanation of that is the following paragraph. "The 501(c)(3) approach also could allow the city, if desired, to coordinate development and operations of other city-owned assets in the downtown area, including potentially the Waldron, the Buskirk-Chumley, the Mill, and other trades district property, and/or Hopewell, the former hospital site, if desired at a future date." So I guess this question is for Ms. Carmichael. Do you see the 501(c)(3) vehicle as a way for all of the, kind of the special properties of town that might potentially be in the same class as a convention center, as potentially manageable under a 501(c)(3)? Is that the idea of this memo?
Yes. Sorry, it's my frog. Yes.
Okay, so I think that maybe everyone can see sort of the, the follow-up question that maybe I can't articulate, but, I mean, the county still has a vested interest in the outcome of the convention center despite, I mean, they, they own land and have operated it for 30 years, even though we have a lot of money to bring to the table. Does it seem reasonable to you that the, the membership of the board of a 501(c)(3), four members of whom are appointed by the administration, might make the county feel left out? Can you, can you discuss that?
Sure. The membership of the 501(c)(3) board is flexible, right? We can talk about that. That was certainly what we proposed in the memo, I stand by that, but nothing is carved in stone at this point along those lines. But I would say, you know, all the properties that we mentioned, those are city-owned properties, right? So our intention would be to own and operate the, well, not really operate, because that would be other people operating, but basically put everything under, all the city-owned properties under that 501(c)(3) canopy, which then doesn't really make sense for, if they're city-owned properties, to have the county have an arm of control. That being said, we would want to work very closely. We think that the way, the 501(c)(6) that's running the convention center right now beautifully, we love, we think that's great. We would want to have the same management entity, we would want to, by all means, have the same marketing entity, Visit Bloomington, we think they're fantastic. We want to be a partner in this, and there's a lot of, there are a lot of aspects of this that really aren't broken that we're not trying to fix.
Okay. Do you mind? Yeah. Why, why has the administration not already formed a 501(c)(3) for those other properties? I mean, if it's such a good idea, I mean, we could have been entertaining a resolution considering a 501(c)(3), responding to the administration's proposal in the same way that the commissioners have tabled an ordinance. So first of all, why hasn't the administration tabled a 501(c)(3) for us to consider and to consider resolution for? And why not set one up anyway, regardless of whether we set up a CIB? In other words, it seems like a good idea, whether it's part of a, it takes over this convention center or not?
That's a process, and that's a good point, yeah. We, we, we. Yeah, we, we, we know that that, this is the path forward and we just didn't want to do it preemptively, but we are working on this.
Okay. So you're saying that we can expect to see a proposal for a 501(c)(3) come forward within short order that would include these other properties? That would, that's contemplated to include these other properties as well as?
Yeah, contemplated. Thank you for stating it that way, Councilmember Volan. That's a, that's really a better way than, yes.
Okay. But I hope you understand my confusion here. Ms. Carmichael?
I think it was a matter of the cart before the horse.
Okay. Thank you, Madam.
And not wanting to step on this process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wonder if there's any response from other entities who, the sponsor or the county or anyone else?
I was going to make a point of order in that the previous couple of questions did not have to do with the amendment?
Are you serious? They have everything to do, I mean, the amendment was tabled before we even had questions on the general proposal. I barely could understand it. It was tabled today, really? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Let's go to Councilmembers Scambler. You have a question, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I lost my list. Here it is. All right. So I'm starting to tally up the particular kinds of issues that will be covered by interlocals. What we've heard so far is that the county commissioners have placed before us a suggested way forward through a C I B. And what we've heard from Mr. Cockrell is that there can be continued conversations and negotiations and that things can be worked out via interlocals. So what I've got here as to be covered by interlocals, properties to be transferred to a C I B, the hiring of an independent auditor, appointments to the C B C. What else is on that list? What other kinds of things do we envision and, or do you all envision being settled and decided via interlocal agreements?
Answer that question.
Maybe that's an all state. I don't, I'm not sure.
With perhaps input from city administration?
I did the same point of order, but I, I'm going to not and retract the one I made for Councilmember Volan because I, I feel like perhaps the council would have benefited from discussing the resolution as a whole before moving to the amendment. So, but I did want to, out of fairness, say that Councilmember Scambler's question also is not about the amendment. But please proceed.
Actually, it had to do with point one on the amendment.
Thank you for understanding because, again, everybody just got this just right before the meeting. There's a lot to digest and unpack. And I do appreciate hearing it, so.
I'm going to give a totally inadequate answer to that question. I guess my, my answer would be that would be one of the reasons why we would want to get the C I B in place and get them, and get them working is so that they can help us through all the issues that they foresee happening. I think you've hit some of the big ones. I think one is the property. I think one is, you know, we know that innkeeper's tax is going to be used. We know that food and beverage tax is going to use. We know that the county has debt issues in order to transfer property. We know that we want to attract a hotel, a substantial hotel. And, you know, I would suggest that we have to think about what incentives we, we think are going to be necessary. That's something that I think the C I B would be in much better position to be able to analyze and work out. I think in the, the ordinance, it talks about letting the C I B review needs for other infrastructure, such as parking garages and things like that. I don't know if any of that is necessary. But, you know, those are all part of this mixture of things that, at the end of the day, is going to require agreements from the city, county, and C I B. And it seems that the, the more decisions we, we, we get to before we have that, you know, the, the person who is actually going to operate and maintain the facility involved, the, the more likely we're going to miss something or the more likely that they, that they will have different ideas on how it is to happen. So, you know, I, I think the county recognizes that this is just the next step. And so I think it's a step that's necessary to move forward in a, in a expedited manner. I mean, I, part of me is talking from frustrations of having dealt with the convention center for, for the six years. And I, and I hear the frustrations with the city administration's staff. I, I get it. But that's, that's all part of it. And I think we kind of need that third party who's going to operate and maintain the facility to kind of help lend information to, to what is all necessary in those interlocals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I guess I'm going to challenge the idea that this is a necessary or the only next step a little bit, like, and, and the idea that Commissioner Thomas shared that, you know, the, the only decision point right now is C I B or 501(c)(3) route. The amendment, you know, and the memo previously shared by the administration about C I B says that we would need to work on the, work out these, they have the opinion that, and if we pass the amendment, the council would be stating its opinion if we approve the resolution, that these interlocal agreements, some of these issues actually need to be worked out first, that those steps have to happen before the C I B is formed because the C I B might not be the right fit if we can't figure out those pieces. So I'm just going to like, I guess, that's, that's a comment more than a question. But I, I guess I want to hear feedback from, probably from Commissioner Thomas or someone on the county side about, about that assumption and the counterassumption I just shared, as well as what might happen if the council decided, for instance, to vote this down tonight, not out of a desire not to move forward with the C I B, but of a, out of a desire to figure more out first and take more time rather than this sort of December 31st, like self-destruct clause. So if we think there, you know, the C I B is worthy of consideration, but there are some things we'd like to work through, how, how does the county receive that?
Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. No, I appreciate the question and I understand your point. All we're asking for with our resolution, and this is what I was trying to clarify before, is to get a feel for what this council wishes to do because we, we have a few council members who have been part of meetings, but not everyone. And so that's why we wanted to move forward and see if we could get moving on something and get some movement toward a common goal via the same path. Yes, there are multiple paths. And if this were to be voted down, if we heard from seven or eight of you or five or six of you, however many, that you're interested in C I B, but you have more questions and you don't want to pass this, that would say something to me versus we only want to follow a 501(c)(3) path. Right? So we're listening to what you're telling us already. It's not just the vote, but it's also the vote. And so we wanted to put something out there to be, to start on a definitive path because we have been going back and forth and it's not the county's fault and it's not the city. It's both, you know, both parties and, thank you, COVID, for a lot of that, too, break in time. We wanted to move the conversation forward. That's all we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a very brief follow-up. And I'd see, maybe Ms. Kate, actually, first, has a response to that. Or maybe not. Ms. Kate, did you want to speak to my question at all or no?
It wasn't your question. It was a follow-up to Councilmember Volan's question.
Okay. A brief follow-up for Commissioner Thomas, actually, which is just which city council members have, have been involved in meetings about this already?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned that some city council members have been in meetings about this. I'm not one of them. I'm just curious who, who they are.
So we've had, yeah, Councilmember Scambler and Councilmember Sandberg currently.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I think it's about time to go to the public. Did we have a comment from Ms. Kate? Okay.
Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel. I just wanted to add to what Ms. Carmichael said earlier. Sorry, I couldn't jump up fast enough. To your question, Councilmember Volan about the 501(c)(3) for the management of other properties and the timing of that, yes, we are actively developing that. We didn't, as Ms. Carmichael said, want to preempt this process, but, but that is in the works. So wanted to let you know that.
With that, Madam Chair, can I just ask, this is not a question for you. What date was the county ordinance passed?
Oh, gosh, I'll have to look.
This is a question for the county. Commissioner Thomas, I think, would know. What was the date that the county ordinance was, was approved? I don't have it handy.
November 9th.
November 9th? This resolution, Madam President, when was it written? Mr. Lucas?
Last week, in large part.
Was, were the commissioners aware that this resolution was being written?
I can say that Beth Kate and I met with Jeff Cockrell and Molly Turner King at the county to discuss the commissioner's ordinance, to, to think through some questions. The county council also considered a resolution recently toward the end of November. And so knowing that that was going to occur in consultation with President Sandberg, the resolution before you tonight was written to, to benefit from the input of the county council. I believe their resolution was passed November 30th, 29th or 30th. And so this was the, the earliest opportunity after that action that, that a resolution could be written to, to incorporate all of that information.
So I just want to be clear, then. We're being asked to consider, the question that's before us was in response to an ordinance passed by the commissioners on November 29th or 30th and is before us and is, is, the offer expires end of the year and we have basically less than a two-week process where we're being asked to consider it. Do I have that right?
The commissioner's ordinance was passed November 9th. The county council adopted a resolution also in support of a capital improvement board at the end of November.
I see.
And so this resolution incorporates and responds to both of those actions.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, Madam President.
Again, we can certainly come back to council for more questions on Amendment 1, but I think it's time to go to the public. If you will, Mr. Lucas, just kind of put the announcement out to anybody who's watching on Zoom so we can get an idea how many people might want to make a comment on Amendment 1. And then, anyone here in chambers, feel free to queue up. I think probably in the interest of time, we will limit the comments to three minutes per speaker.
Yes, and I do see one, one hand raised on Zoom currently. If there are other members of the public on Zoom that would like to comment on the amendment to Resolution 2220, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send us a chat to let us know you'd like to comment.
Thank you. And we will begin in chambers with our first speaker. Again, we'd like you to sign in, make sure you're stating your name.
Thank you, Council. Eric Spoonmore, President of the Chamber of Commerce. I would urge you to not support Amendment 1. I think, I agree with Commissioner Thomas that it seems like this question has become more about whether or not the city council and the city wants to support a capital improvement board versus a 501(c)(3). Now, the Chamber of Commerce, as you may know, we've issued a press release recently. We're very much in favor of a capital improvement board. We see the commissioners' actions in creating that as a compromise. And if the tables, table was flipped and they had proposed a county-controlled 501(c)(3), the chamber wouldn't support that either. And so we see the, the C I B as a great compromise for the county and the city to work together on this to achieve the shared goal that we've all been, you know, wanting in this community and have been working towards for the last five, six years. Well, probably more like 20 years. So just, and also to, to the issue of time, it seems like, my sense is that some council members may feel like they're being rushed to make this decision. I think it's important to remember that we have a general assembly that's about to go into session that wants to take away this funding mechanism from us. We dodged that bullet last year. We're not going to be lucky again this year if we don't act quick. Time is absolutely of the essence. Capital Improvement Board is a proven model that works in the state of Indiana. Many communities have done this with projects just like what we want to do here. So I urge you again to not accept this amendment and just make a decision on, you know, whether or not we want a capital improvement board or if a city-controlled 501(c)(3) needs to be the proper mechanism for governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Who do we have on Zoom?
First up is Jeff McKim.
Welcome, Mr. McKim. You'll have three minutes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Jeff McKim, Jeff McKim, member of the Monroe County Council. First, I need to make an important point about a C I B versus a 501(c)(3) before I move on to a specific comment about Amendment 1. And that's the issue of standing. With a public entity like a C I B, every resident has a potential remedy to potential violations of basic transparency statutes. Every resident has the standing to exercise options to enforce the transparency required by law, including the use of the public access counselor, which costs nothing. That's simply not possible with a private entity. The remedy in the case of a private 501(c)(3) is to file a lawsuit and good luck getting standing on that. A, a public entity is simply better than a private entity on transparency grounds. Now, the Monroe County Council voted unanimously in support of the C I B path. We recognize that the city administration's memo included some valid issues, in particular, the broader issue of balance between the city and the county. We recognized, and this was reflected in our deliberations, that some of those issues would need to be addressed in some sort of future M O U or interlocal agreement. But as Mr. Cockrell said, the sooner we get the C I B put together and appointments made, the sooner we can get some of these other questions answered, decisions made, and progress made. My strong preference would be for you to reject this amendment and simply pass the support for a C I B reflected in the underlying resolution as is and then move forward in negotiating the specifics. The administration has already indicated they don't support a C I B with or without this amendment. But if you do adopt an amendment like this one, I encourage you to make the appropriate, actually, I urge you to make the appropriate changes to or entirely strike new Roman numeral 1.1. As you've already heard, this arrangement is simply not possible under the current statute. I think there are some things that we can do to get to the spirit of that item. So, for example, the county council So for example, the county council could potentially resolve not to appoint an elected official or employee of the city or county. Our current practice has been to appoint one of our own members to the CBC. While I can only speak for myself, I would certainly support a resolution or ordinance that would restrict us from nominating a county-elected official or an employee. Further, I would also support an ordinance that would have us solicit a recommendation from the city for one of the hotelier positions on the CIB, or onto CBC, rather. But the way this amendment is worded right now, we simply not be capable statutorily of meeting that requirement. So again, I urge you first to either reject or significantly amend Amendment 1, and then to support the underlying resolution expressing support for a CIB. Thank you very much for your time and deliberations tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. All right, next up at the podium. Again, please sign in, state your name.
Hi, Kate Wiltz, Monroe County Council. I agree with both of the previous speakers that although I would very much encourage you to pass the original resolution, I think that the amendment is too problematic to pass tonight as it's written. In addition to the point that Counselor McKim made, the very last part of the Exhibit A amendment essentially says, hey, we'll do a 501(c)(3) if we, if things don't work out, and kind of undermines the idea of at least we're all taking a step forward in agreement that, okay, here's, here's the path. I think that's been said, and I like that idea of, we have a lot of process to work on, and if we choose a 501(c)(3) or a CIB, we've at least shown the state legislature, which has indicated informally at least, that they want to sunset this tax because we haven't made a step. If we choose a path, at least three-quarters of the entities needed have shown intent to take a step forward on this issue. And the items in Exhibit A are largely things that I would think either we could talk about in the next few months as an interlocal or an MOU, or we could defer as Roman numeral 2, number 3 kind of indicates, we're going to have, we're going to have a CIB full of professionals from our community who are way more expert on these exact types of decisions than any of us, I think, really are. And we can defer to them to present to the rest of us for approval on a lot of these things. So again, my, my thought is, we'd really like to see a structure put in place that's transparent, that by definition has an accountability to it that would have to be labored over to include in the 501(c)(3). And we have an obligation to act quickly. We've been collecting this tax for five years, so something should be passed tonight in favor of a CIB. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and approach the podium and sign in, next speaker here, but let's see who's at home.
It's on Zoom at the moment.
All right, very good. We are back to the podium.
Good evening, Council. My name is Trent Decker. I'm an at-large member of the Monroe County Council, here along with some of my colleagues in the county. First of all, thank you for approaching the issue. I think that in the last, I was going to say a few years, but it's well over a few years, a number of us have been approaching this issue over and over and over. And one of the things that I want to draw attention to is that timeline that we've been on. We've essentially collected this tax countywide, we're now ending the fifth year of doing this. Previous speakers have talked extensively about some concerns with the legislature and potential action there. I am always hesitant to alarm people or scare them or use language that concerns them about the legislature, but if passed is prologue, and with the legislature it has been, I think that we have strong signals that they could be looking at our community. I am in opposition, with all due respect, of the amendment as it's written. I see several different problems, some of the legality issues in Item 1. When we go to 2, down to number 3, I see that as a lot of particular details that will choke the process. I think we've been choking on this process as elected officials for quite some time. I look at the CIB in the underlying resolution as an opportunity to bring in a transparent way others in to not share the burden, but to administer some of this burden with a public transparency process. With the countywide tax, I am a bit concerned about a 501(c)(3) and that end of the transparency. I'm not trying to cast aspersions at anything, but we have to be exceedingly cautious with that, as we have to with every dollar that we have. I think that a CIB can show us tremendous leadership. We certainly have examples of that in all of our boards and commissions, and we see this routinely. And as Counselor Wiltz and I were talking about, when we look at the functions of our dispatch center, this is a testament to what the county and the city has done well. I think some of the details, while they're exceedingly important, and there's things to work out, while some of these details are difficult, I think that in a few years, I think we will not, as a public, be focusing on those details. In fact, I think we'll look back and we'll not be able to figure it out, much like we can't quite always place what happened to turn the old Tom O'Daniel Ford to the current convention center. I will say this in my last words, and I'm respectful of your time, I know it's important in our meetings, I urge movement. We've got to go, we've got to move. We have been choking on these details and will continue to choke, and I respectfully urge you to say no on the amendment, and look at that underlying resolution with some positive movement.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Anyone from home?
Still no takers on Zoom.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner, and I did want to offer some public commentary, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer your questions earlier. First, I do want to thank you all for hosting this agenda item. This is important, we put it out there, we appreciate that you picked it up. Whatever you do with it, it's up to you. The first thing I will say is that, the thing to remember is that city residents are county residents. Let me say it again, city residents are county residents. There are elected officials who are in the county, on the county council, and on the Board of Commissioners, who live in the city. And so, let's not forget, this is not an us or them, it's us, okay? The county council, we want to do the CIB because this is going to be an equal partnership. We did not see anything, as Councilmember Volin pointed out, about an equal partnership in a construction of a 501(c)(3) where the city has all of the appointments. Let's not forget, the food and beverage tax that is bringing in dollars for this project is there because of the county council. The convention center has been operating for 30 years successfully as a county entity. That's part of that equal partnership that has to be remembered. I want to bring you back to December 13th, 2017, when Mayor Hamilton appeared before the county council and asked them to pass this food and beverage tax, and I'm going to read quotes from the minutes. This is from Mayor Hamilton, "I want to also express our very strong commitment from the city to continue the collaboration with the county and the private sector in moving this project forward, as we've been collaborating over the past year on this project, and we look forward to working together in the coming years to oversee the development and opening of this building. In addition, strong collaboration between city and county in the planning and development of this project, including the commitment of city-owned land in the footprint of the planned development, was also mentioned." And in a question, in response to a question from Councilmember McKim, the mayor said this, "I think that's going to be a long process that we're going to go through together." And to a question from Councilmember Spoonmore at the time about metrics, "How do you know this has been successful?" The mayor's response includes this, "This is not just a city project, this is a joint project. This is not for us to determine that." And in response to a question from Counselor Yoder, "I have a commitment to work closely with the county on this. We are in the county. Every resident of the city is a resident of county, as you all know, and I think this is a fantastic opportunity for this city and county to work together, and I don't think it will work unless we're collaborative about it."
And Ms. Thomas, your time for this particular round.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone from Zoom?
No, not at the moment.
All right, back to the podium.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. So earlier in the meeting, I heard the idea sort of expressed that a CIB and a 501(c)(3) had always been under consideration in parallel fashion, and that didn't square up with my recollection of history exactly, and so I went back to the archives of the B-Square, and I found this delightful photograph of Commissioner Thomas, and she, I don't know how this is going to work, maybe I will, let's see. Ah, you can't see that, trust me. It's a delightful photograph of Commissioner Thomas, holding aloft a diagram, and it's, it was called at the time a spider web of connections between the various entities that would have to enter into a interlocal agreement to make a CIB actually work. So, this article is dated December 19th, so almost exactly three years ago, and I'll just read the first three graphs. "After months of disagreement between city and county officials, in the last couple of weeks, the choice of governance for the $59 million expansion of Monroe County's Convention Center has settled on the formation of a capital improvement board, a CIB. The CIB is enabled under the state statute as an entity the county commissioners can create through enacting an ordinance. At a Thursday late afternoon meeting that wrapped up in about an hour, Monroe County and Bloomington officials continued reviewing some of the gnarlier details of an interlocal agreement that is planned to supplement the statutory requirements for the CIB. The outcome of the meeting is that County Attorney Jeff Cockrell and Bloomington's Corporation Counsel Philippa Guthrie will be working just before year's end, or in the first few days of next year, to put together a draft of the interlocal agreement. Elected officials have set a next meeting for January 13th." I think that's an important chunk of history that maybe you should keep in mind tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Askins. Anyone else from home?
I have no comments from folks on Zoom, no.
All right, it looks like there are no more public comment here in chambers. We are back to council for, I assume, questions. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I wanted to propose an amendment to my amendment. And I emailed it to Mr. Lucas and to City Clerk Baldwin. Mr. Lucas, would, are you able to pull up that text? I can talk through it, but it might be...
Give me a moment, I will try.
It might be easier if you can see it. So what I propose in Exhibit A, under Roman numeral 1, Item 1, we delete A and B, and we just say equal representation on the Convention and Visitors Commission, CBC, within the confines of state code, or what, something like that, within the confines of state code. So this, this leaves it more open, like we agree in principle that the city and the county should have some say as to who's on the CBC. We know that in state code, it's the county that actually makes the appointments, but this would indicate that we expect the county to consult with the city. And then, in Roman numeral 3, county commitment to continued appropriation of inkeepers' tax proceeds to the CIB to fund CC operations, marketing, maintenance, and related expenses. Let's see if Mr. Lucas can pull it up.
Are those the amendments?
Yes.
Finished the amendments?
I guess I need a second before. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have the amendments on the table now, so are there any questions from council regarding? Pardon me? Yes, uh-huh. Any questions from council? Councilmember Volin.
I mean, we're getting really deep in the weeds here. I haven't had a chance to ask the administration's reaction to public comment, and now we're changing the amendment yet again. So, I'm not sure how to proceed.
Yes, thank you. Are questions only for the sponsor of the amendment to the amendment, or?
To the amendment at this point, yes.
Never mind, I'll wait till we come back to the amendment as amended, so.
Okay, so there...
I can display, I think, the changes that Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned, if that would be helpful.
Right, so the additions are in green and the deletions are in red.
Point of order, Madam President. I mean, now we have to have an entire another round of reactions to this.
Yes, I know.
Questions, public comment, a response to the administration. Are we, okay, thank you.
Are you wanting to ask if the sponsor could hold the amendment until we have that opportunity and have that discussion first before we...
I mean, that's up to you. My first question is going to be...
Because I agree with your frustration here.
Yeah, I, my first question is going to be to Ms. Carmichael. What is her reaction to this amendment to the amendment?
Ms. Carmichael, are you there?
Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. So, I got to admit, I'm a little confused at this point. I'm not sure what my reaction is. If we're, if you could put that back up, Stephen...
Mr. Lucas, we have it up on our screen, I guess they can't see it from Zoom.
Yeah, is there any way I can see that? I'm sorry.
Let her see it, please.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so we're going with, the red is out, the green is in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, great. Equal representation on the Convention and Visitors Commission within the confines of state code. Well, so state code does not have it set up that way, so, actually, again, I just have to reiterate, this is, we can build the suit, or we can keep up all of these machinations and try to, try to pound this square peg into this round hole, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
All right, so, council questions for the amendment that's on the table?
I've got a follow-up.
Pardon me?
I've got a follow-up for the sponsor.
Yes, thank you.
So, I guess I would ask you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, both the county and the city administration seem to be more in favor of negotiating the details a little bit later, and you're, with this amendment and with the amendment to the amendment, you're trying to sort of nail them both down now. Would you agree with that characterization?
I, I think the CIB is a preferable option, but I want assurances that the city will play an equal role, and that is, and I also would like the mayor to get on board with this. So, that's why I offered the amendment, and of course, the amendment to the amendment is because of the comments that we've heard.
Okay, then I have one more follow-up question, and this is not just to the amendment to the amendment, or to the amendment, but to the resolution as a whole, it's all of the above. Public comment, several members of public comment who are, who are mostly elected officials, pointed out that time is of the essence because the tax itself is in danger. So my question is, what will it take to ensure that the tax is no longer in danger? My understanding is that only a commitment to a bond will make that happen, but I'm getting the impression that the formation of a CIB and the, somehow the assignment of the taxes to the CIB might foreclose that possibility. Can anyone answer for me the question of what it would take to ensure that the tax is no longer in jeopardy? I don't know who to ask that question to.
Mr. Spoonmore.
Thank you, Eric Spoonmore, Gregory Bloomington, Chamber of Commerce. We have regular conversations with area legislators. This situation with the food and beverage tax is well-known to those legislators, and I think my understanding in my conversations with a number of them on both sides of the aisle, is that the General Assembly wants to see meaningful progress, and I think meaningful progress on this project would constitute the formation of a capital improvement board, where everybody, city council, county council, county commissioners, and the mayor agree that this is the pathway that we want to go forward. Otherwise, I think it's going to be in jeopardy. But I don't think necessarily bonds have to be issued.
Well, okay, I appreciate that answer. I'm not sure you're the person to follow up on this question, but I appreciate the sentiments expressed to you by legislators, but I'm talking about hard, in other words, if we have dollars committed to a bond, no one's going to repeal the tax. I don't know how long that was going to take, but I'm asking, I think, a legal question rather than a political question. Can anyone, Mr. Lucas, Ms. Kate, Mr. Cockrell, can you, anybody intelligently talk about what will prevent the tax from being repealed? Will it be dedication of the dollars to a bond, or is it simply the assignment of the dollars to a CIB?
Mr. Cockrell, you look like you might want to approach, and I think Ms. Carmichael has a comment.
I will approach, Jeff Cockrell, Monroe County Attorney, so I am not your attorney in this, right? And I am going to pretend that you are one of my clients. And this is how I would, I would likely respond to that. Again, not your attorney, you know, don't sue me if I'm wrong. But typically, I would look at the state constitution, which has a prohibition against the state interfering with a contract, right? And so what a bond obligation is, is a contract that, and you would pledge the food and beverage tax revenue towards that. And to me, that's, that's the, that's where my mind went when you have, when you asked that question. There may be other mechanisms out there to do that, but I think in the context of this, I would say, you know, once you issue the debt and there is somebody that is not a public, that's not the city, you know, not the receiver of the, of the tax revenues, who has a contractual ability to get that revenue, then I think you start looking at that constitutional part of, that constitution. And I think it's federal and state constitutional items. I think that would kind of satisfy that.
Ms. Kate, do you have a response?
Beth K. Corporation Counsel, I'm not technically your lawyer either, so with that massive disclaimer. Yeah, I mean, I would agree. We see in various places in the state code and we see in the state constitution the principle that Mr. Cockrell reflected about not interfering with contracts. I'll, I'll put aside my thoughts about annexation and interference with contracts. But, but it is true that once you have debt service obligations, if you have a contract that's been entered into, those are protected against subsequent interference legally. So now whether, this is not to suggest that what the legislature may be thinking about and what they may otherwise want to do short of that may be influenced by what the stages of progress toward a goal are. I don't know if that helps answer your question.
It helps.
Okay. And I think Mary Catherine also had her.
Ms. Carmichael, please. Would you like to add to this discussion?
Thank you so much, Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. So I, I do differ with Eric Spoonmore from the chamber on his interpretation of what's going on at the state legislature. I too am in touch with a variety of legislators and lobbyists in Indianapolis. I think that their primary focus for this session may be future formations of, or uses for food and beverage taxes in communities who are thinking about initiating a food and beverage tax. I'm not saying it's completely off the table, but I would not raise the level of alarm today that I might have in the future. I would also say, what they're looking at, he did have one thing, right, with the demonstrable progress, that is what they're looking for, right? So I think, actually, what's going on tonight is almost demonstrable progress. We're really working hard on this. We're keeping them updated that we're working really hard to get this figured out in Bloomington. They know that we're not just sitting on our hands and counting that money for fun. They know that we're trying to find a path forward. And from my understanding, that's okay. And frankly, the legislature doesn't care, from, again, from my communications, legislature doesn't care if it's a 501(c)(3) or a CIB. They don't have a horse in that race. It's just get the thing done. Do what you told the people you were going to do with that tax. And that's, again, we're still committed to that. We're 100% committed to that. So I, I just have to, again, disagree a little bit there with Mr. Spoonmore.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I see a hand up from Councilmember Rallo. Do you have a question on the amendment to the amendment?
Yes, I do. So to the sponsor. So the intent of the sponsor, Councilmember Piedmont, part of the intent was to provide incentive to the administration, that if we were to support a CIB, that this would, you know, incorporate some of the terms, some of the conditions that had been stated in the memo by Mary Catherine Carmichael on November 23rd. So I wanted to ask Ms. Carmichael if this is a step forward then? I know that you don't, you support, the administration supports a 501(c)(3), but this is a step forward in terms of providing these conditions, is it not?
So it is a step forward on a CIB. It's, it's a, it's a step forward, but not in the direction we'd like to go.
Okay, I'll take that as a, as a conditional yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other counsel questions on the amendment to the amendment before we go back to the public? Seeing none, public comment on the amendment to the amendment. We need to make our announcement for those at home, and then if you have a comment, please come to the podium. Sign in and state your name. Three minutes.
Currently, if there are others on Zoom that would like to offer comments, please use the raise hand feature or send a chat to the meeting host.
Let's start here at the podium while we're seeing if anybody's at home.
Thank you. Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner, I will not use three minutes. I want to point out that as amended, point three in the amendment is exactly what's happening now, so I don't know why that's needed. And if there, we're going to hear concerns about laws that may change or things, then I think look to the words "good faith" that were incorporated in point four. I think we need more of that, especially at this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from home?
Yes, Jeff McKim.
Thank you, Mr. McKim.
Thank you very much, Jeff McKim, Monroe County Counsel. I will take well less than three minutes. In response to Ms. Piedmont Smith's question about administration's support for her changing the language about the CBC composition, Ms. Carmichael talks about building the suit in support of a private 501(c)(3). But this particular question about who appoints the CBC and how its funding is directed has absolutely nothing to do with the public CIB versus a built-to-suit 501(c)(3) to run an expanded convention center. CBC statutes are the CBC statutes. All the building that builds a suit in the world doesn't get you around them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from home? Anyone else from chambers? All right, we're going to come back to counsel for either final comment on amendment to the amendment, or any other questions. Councilmember Scambolari with a question.
Yes, this question is directed to Ms. Thomas, Commissioner Thomas, or Mr. Cockrell, or both, or whatever you think is appropriate. As amended, Exhibit A, as you look at Amendment A as amended, is there any way in which you feel it disadvantages the county? I'm recalling conversations even before I was on council that I heard of calls for a true and equal partnership. So I want to ask specifically, is there anything in Exhibit A that would unfairly disadvantage the county government in this circumstance?
Madam President, that's sort of a substantive discussion, question about the amendment. In fact, Councilmember Scambolari said the amendment as amended, but we have not yet amended the amendment. So could we take a vote perhaps on the amendment to the amendment before proceeding with that question?
All right. So any additional questions before we go to the final comment on the amendment to the amendment? Seeing none. All right, final comments. Councilmember Bollin.
Regarding the sub-amendment, let's call it that, I support it. I don't know yet whether I support the amendment as a whole, but it seems to more precisely follow the language of, that was originally intended, and it removes ambiguity. So I support the sub-amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Scambolari. And then Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, thank you. I would echo those comments as well, and I especially appreciate what Councilmember Piedmont Smith shared in presenting this, that, that certainly there is a belief, I share her belief, that a CIB is a better path forward compared to a 501(c)(3). I think, as we have all talked about, true and equal partnerships over the years, I think there are elements in this amendment to the amendment that will help ensure that within the parameters we have to follow in state code. Thank you.
Member Rallo.
Yeah, thanks. I support the amendment to the amendment. It removes the potential conflicts with state statute, but I have a lot of trepidation about the way that this has proceeded, because there hasn't been really adequate time to vet details about this. Seems, the other conditions seem quite reasonable. So I'll, I'll be following with interest Councilmember Scambolari's question to follow. Thank you.
Anyone else, final comment? I will take a shot at this. I find the amendment in general just a big muddy of the waters, and so I cannot support the amendment. The amendments to the amendments, while they may be helping to try to move things in a better direction, I can't even support them. It's just too muddy, and I think we have a better straightforward path by accepting the resolution that we have before us. So I will be voting no. All right, if no one else has any further comments, no one else on remote, let's ask the clerk to please call the roll on the amendments to the amendment.
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Scambolari?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
No.
All right, and that passes six, three, zero. Now, we move to the amendment itself as amended. So where are we? Are we back to public, no, we are back to counsel? Or any questions? Councilmember Scambolari.
May I revisit my earlier question? Again, I would direct it to colleagues at the county, very specifically in Exhibit A, as we have just amended it. Are there any specific ways in which you feel these, what's been laid out here, the various elements, would somehow unfairly disadvantage the county in moving forward with an expanded convention center?
I, I think if I, if I followed this correctly, item five, had that, was that part of the amendment, particularly the last section, the last sentence? Was that amended, or has that remained intact, I guess? From my opinion, the only thing that gives me a lot of qualm is the, is the statement that if no agreement can be reached, the parties must establish a 501(c)(3) or alternative governance structure that will maintain the balance. I think, I guess in my mind, it, it would, I guess I'm thinking that if, if there is no agreement, then it falls to a path that I think one side has already indicated that they preferred. And so I think, at a negotiating table, I think that would be a disadvantage, but other than that, I, I don't see anything.
Thank you. All right, I must take, oh, excuse me, go ahead and respond to that question, but I'm going to ask that we take a break here for a minute as soon as we finish with this.
When you struck point one, did that include sub-point two?
No.
Okay. So that's an issue, because the CBC is, is, again, that's the state statute. Again, for me, number three, as amended, already exists in county ordinance, just have some good faith, that it's been there since 1990, it'll stay. And the last item, the last line of the entire Exhibit A is problematic, because it's, it basically says, "We're choosing this path," but not really. And to me, that's, that's not a sign of good faith in approaching this equally either. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, at this time, I have been asked to take a small recess for a break, and so we will do that when we come back after about two or three minutes? That'd be fine, five minutes? We will begin with questions from council members on the amended amendment. So at this time, I would like to call a five-minute recess. Thank you.
You're doing great.
One minute, please. One minute. If we can wrap up our conversations, we have less than one minute to reconvene. Turn to the dais.
Dais?
Dais?
Have I mispronounced this one?
I don't know. Did I mispronounce it? Probably. Everyone, please return to order. We have a quorum of council here, and so where we left off were council questions on the amendment as amended. Do we have additional council questions? And seeing no questions from council, do we now go to the public for comments on Amendment One as amended? Is that right? Or have we already done that? No, yeah, we're back to council for questions and final action, right?
But may we move an additional amendment to the amendment?
If you must.
Yes, I must. Madam-- Madam President, thank you. I appreciate Mr. Cockrell's comments earlier, and so with those comments in mind, I'd like to move Amendment Two to Amendment One, or sub, let's call it Sub Amendment E for simplicity's sake, that would strike the very last line of Exhibit A. That line reads, "If no agreement can be reached, the parties must then establish a 501(c)(3) or alternative governance structure that will maintain the balance."
Second.
This amendment would strike that line.
That is removed and seconded, so now we come to council for questions on the amendment to the amendment. Any questions? Councilmember Volin?
Can we get a reaction from the administration on this sub-amendment?
Yes, please. Who would like to speak from the administration or the county regarding this striking of that last line, which has been described as problematic? Ms. Carmichael, I see a hand up.
Sorry, I was having momentary technical difficulties there. Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of the Mayor. You know, we've had an interesting experience in this process. We've worked really long and hard to get this process moving forward. I found, I was initiating meetings over the summer, even at a time when the county was, had said that they would be the ones who would host the next meeting. So I think that part of the rationale behind this is, first of all, we think the 501(c)(3) is the best alternative between the two options. But second of all, we found that, you know, sometimes the best way to get action is to really put some pressure on. So that is certainly one way to do it, to say, okay, if we can't figure this out, then we're absolutely going to go the way that we think is the proper way, and that's a 501(c)(3).
All right, we have gotten that answered. Does that satisfy you, Councilmember Volin? Anyone else? Questions from council? Seeing no questions from council, we go to the public for Councilmember Scambaluri's amendment to the amendment, to Amendment One.
Eric Spoonmore, Chamber of Commerce. The chamber supports the sub-amendment to strike the language. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from home? Shall we make the announcement?
Comment on this amendment to Amendment One, please use the raise hand feature or send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. And I see Jeff McKim.
Mr. McKim, thank you.
Jeff McKim, Monroe County Council. I'll be his brief with Mr. Spoonmore. I also support this amendment, and I think it moves in the right direction. I will say that I appreciate what Mary Catherine said earlier about, you know, sometimes some pressure is good. And actually, I, you know, I know a lot of this probably feels like it's beating up on the administration, but the administration definitely took the lead, I think, in getting the discussion back on track. And I, you know, I think they should declare victory for that. I think that was a really good move, and I think it's benefited the community as a whole. But that said, I definitely support this amendment, and I support moving forward with the CIB. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from home or here in chambers?
Yes, next on Zoom is Steve.
All right, welcome. If you can state your name, you'll have three minutes on the amendment to the amendment.
I sure don't need three minutes. Steve Lehman, and I definitely support the amendment and support the CIB.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I see.
All right, if there's no more public comment, we are back to council for either a final comment on this amendment or another question. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I seconded this and support this, call it a sub-amendment, because the county's ordinance has a sell-by date on a CIB anyway. This statement is also redundant. If no agreement can be reached on a CIB, then we have to come up with something else, so there's no point in stating it. And I can see why county officials might be put off by the requirement that parties must then establish a 501(c)(3), even though it says or alternative governance structure. That's going to have to happen if goodwill is to prevail. So I support the sub-amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Final comment? Seeing none, we will ask the clerk to please call the roll on Councilmember Scambaluri's amendment to the amendment. Start with Councilmember Sims.
I believe on Sub Amendment Two to Amendment One, or whatever. I hope it was.
I'm sorry, I didn't actually hear that.
Yes.
Thank you. Scambaluri?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes nine, zero, zero. So that puts us back to Amendment One, correct? As amended?
As amended.
All right. Council questions? Public comment? This is, we've already done that? So no public comment, because we've already done that, on the amendment as amended?
Is this public comment on the--
Well, we're trying to determine here if there's even--
The council offered comment on the original amendment. You've now amended it twice. Council's normal practice is to offer a comment on amended legislation. It's up to the council, but that would be in keeping with the council's normal practice.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So we will allow public comment again. Do you want to make the announcement for the Zoom?
Yes, if there are folks that would like to comment on the amendment now as amended, please use the raise hand feature or send a chat to the meeting host.
All right, and we will start here in chambers.
My name is Ajon Rose. I'm a citizen of the county and retired business owner. I've been supportive of the convention center since it was a concept, and I encourage you to support the CIB as a model that exists and works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone from home? No hands up from home? All right, we are back to council then. Councilmember Volin?
Okay, so just to reframe things, we've adjusted the amendment on the table from Councilmember Piedmont Smith twice. One of the questions that came up in the conversation, God knows when it was, but it was sometime tonight, is that this amendment is too prescriptive. I think, I think that was the criticism of it. I guess I'd like to hear from somebody in the county to reiterate why this amendment is too, I mean, do I have that right, that it's too prescriptive for the county's taste? And why would we be better off not adopting the amendment? Can, can I get a, an opinion from a county official? Is, am I, am I, am I summarizing it correctly? And can you tell us what you think?
County Commissioner Julie Thomas. I will try to answer your question. I think I'm, I think I'm following your question. The reason why we don't believe the amendment is necessary at all is because this is all how things will be settled in a CIB, whether through a CIB or before a CIB with memorandum of understanding that are going to be needed. All of this will be addressed. It's very detailed where we're just asking a very simple question. Do you want to proceed with the CIB, or are you wanting to proceed with the 501(c)(3)? That's our question. And we recognize that there are points that will have to be worked out, but our question is super simple. Does that help?
You're, just finish that thought. Your question is super simple. Do we want a CIB or not? Is that it?
That's it.
But I mean, you've heard from certain councilmembers and the administration that we want some assurances--
Right.
--within that CIB.
Right. What do you do as well? And they're not really outlined. What we've outlined is a partnership of equals, and that's our focus, a partnership of equals, to pick up where we left off before COVID struck, and to keep moving forward with the negotiations and come to a resolution as quickly as possible before the clock runs out in the legislature.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, before we go to final action. Seeing no questions, any final comments on Amendment One as amended twice? Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, I appreciate very, very much the discussion we've had today. I think it's been some of the most productive kinds of conversations I've seen in this journey. And I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's work in putting this exhibit together, I think, or putting this amendment together, excuse me. I am satisfied with the questions I've had answered about interlocals. I understand that much can be worked out later, much can be worked out later. And at the same time, in my role, I represent city residents. And so I feel an obligation to ensure that the city has built-in statements that include, that ensure a true and equal partnership. And that's also why I very specifically asked the question of our county colleagues, are there any ways in which you feel unfairly disadvantaged by what's been laid out in Exhibit A? And I think we've gone on to address some of those. So with that, I will be supporting the item before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I was actually just going to ask a question, but I think I'll just reflect on that as a statement instead, and we'll just move forward. And it's just to, again, I appreciate this sort of simplification from Commissioner Thomas about this yes or no on CIB, but I just really don't think it's that simple. And in particular, there's, there's some things in the ordinance creating the CIB that specify things the CIB shall do and sort of will therefore be authorized to do, seemingly on its own initiative once created. Those are contradicted by things in this amendment that are subject to city and county approval. So they are not one in the same. It's not, this is all just stuff that can get sorted any way or another after the CIB is created. The length, you know, if we just wanted to express our will and desire to move forward with the CIB, we could have done that with a resolution that didn't automatically create a CIB. We could have just passed a resolution saying the council expresses its intent to move forward with the CIB as the governance structure for convention center expansion. So just pushing back or disagreeing, I guess respectfully, that it's only a question about whether or not to proceed with the CIB. There's more in it than this. And without getting too much more into the details, for reasons similar to Councilmember Scambaluri, I'll support the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, similarly, I, my preference, my preferences for a CIB rather than a 501(c)(3), I think it was well stated by Councilmember McKim, to ensure transparency and process is the best means. There were problems with this amendment. I think that those problems are largely resolved. I think that the, I think that what is left in terms of conditions are, it seemed to be reasonable and rather benign, I think agreeable, should be agreeable to all parties, in knowing that there'd be further details worked out. So I was formerly of the mind to find a resolution adequate in itself for stating my support, but I'll support this amendment as a step forward, and I appreciate Councilmember, even though it came in a late hour and this was a trying process, I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's effort to move this forward and joining with the administration to find some common points of agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Volin?
Okay, so this is just on the amendment. I can barely keep my thoughts in my head. It's been hard to follow. This is an amendment to a resolution. Resolution is not binding, except in certain circumstances where we, like, it's statutorily required for some kind of bond, but it's not what's at hand here. So this certainly isn't going to protect the tax, at least not directly. It's not a guarantee of a protection of the tax. And-- I'm sorry, I'm hearing an echo or something. It's not going to guarantee the tax. It's not even a guarantee of what we're actually going to do. It's more just an indication of where the city council stands at the, at this time. And, but what, what it has been effective at, the amendment and the resolution as a whole, has been in doing what everyone has said we need to do, which is to advance the conversation. It's forced us as a council to say what we think. We certainly had an extensive debate tonight about it. Everyone has a better sense of where we are. So in that respect, it has succeeded. I think both the ordinance from the commissioners and the proposal of a 501(c)(3) for the administration have forced the issue for this body. So if we were to approve this amendment, it would say, I think, to everyone in the county that, yes, we are generally supportive, but we are concerned about the details, and I agree with, I believe it was Councilmember Scambaluri or Flaherty, I don't remember who, that it's not that simple, that, that we, it isn't for us simply a question of whether or not to have a CIB. I don't think that the administration has done a sufficient job of selling the 501(c)(3). I do think it has potential. It is precedent-ed. It can be made to be the equivalent of a public body if all of its agreements are set up to effectively be as transparent as a public body. What is still missing from the administration's proposal for a 501(c)(3) is the membership-- What is still missing from the administration's proposal for a 501(c)(3) is the membership of the board. And perhaps the most significant argument that has been advanced tonight, for my opinion, is that the CIB board is equally split, that it's clear that what's being proposed is an equal split. And it's not yet been clearly proposed by the administration, and I think that that is causing their proposal to find less favor than a CIB right now. So having said that, I'm still, I mean, I'm going to approve the amendment to the resolution with my colleagues. But, well, I guess I can leave this comment for the overall discussion of the resolution. I am concerned about how we're actually going to get there. We still have a lot of negotiating to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? All right, seeing no council comments. I will just say that I was fully prepared to support what was in front of us tonight before the amendment came forward, and we have had a robust discussion, and I appreciate very much that the work that this council has done to make the amendment palatable, at least it seems like it is, from the response from the county representatives. I still have just concerns about the initial 15 points that were put forward. They seem to not be in good faith with working with what the county has put forward as a path forward to get on with this and to expedite this discussion. I was very satisfied that the county does want to work in good faith. I speak with them, I talk with the representatives, and I don't feel that as a representative of the city, they would not have been respectful to us moving forward with the CIB. I do not agree with the 501(c)(3), and those 15 points appeared to me to be like trying to turn what we have discussed as the pros of a CIB into more of a 501(c)(3). While these amendments do make this better, it still does not satisfy me, so I will be voting no on the amendments and hope we can approve the CIB with the resolution. All right, anyone else have a final comment? Anyone? Councilmember Rosenbarger? Don't see a hand up. Okay. Let us ask the clerk to please call the roll on Amendment 1 as amended twice. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
And that passes 8-1-0. So we are now on to the resolution before us, Resolution 22-20. So where do we stand here? Do we have any more questions from council? Councilmember Volin.
I'm, continue to be interested in the three bullet points from the administration's memo that were not included in the amendment. And I'm going to focus now on point number 10, which was the transfer of property to a CIB. Could the transfer of property to a CIB not, actually, I'm going to withdraw the question. I was going to say, is it the same as encumbering the tax with a bond? But is it in no way an encumbrance that might also send a message if we were to specifically say that we, that the city and the county have collectively transferred property to a new entity, and that shows that we're serious? I, it's not a great question, but I'm going to ask. Does anybody who can respond to it?
Can anyone help out? Councilmember Volin?
I'm going to withdraw the question.
I see Ms. Carmichael's hand up.
Great. Ms. Carmichael. Thank you, Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of Mayor. Appreciate it. You know, I would just say, this property was amassed over a period of 30 years. The old, or the current center had hardly opened before it was realized, gosh, we're going to need a bigger facility. So community leaders at that time started amassing tracts of property in the area, much of which, although not all, but much of which, most of which, in fact, I think it's fair to say, was purchased with inkeeper's tax dollars. Let's remember that inkeeper's tax dollars is money that basically, for the most part, comes in from out of town. It's taken from, it's added to a person's hotel or motel bill. So that's how that funding is generated and how that property came to be amassed.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Corporation Counsel Kate, let me just jump in and say, Councilmember Volin, can you hear me okay in response to your question? I, I think the gist of this point was to do what you just suggested, which is to say, let's see seriousness by commitment of those properties. Mr. Cockrell mentioned before about there being a difficulty if the, some of the property is debt encumbered. I know when the city first proposed a purchase that would relieve the rest of that debt, I think that was, you know, sort of thinking that that might free up that property a little sooner. But in any event, I think the real gist of this point was what you suggested. So just to try to interpret that for you, yeah.
But the problem is that neither you nor the county would transfer land to a CIB until you would negotiate the details. Is that not correct? I mean, like, until you-
Yeah, so I mean, I think what's, what's reflected in here is, again, everything in here was attempting to do, to indicate the balance that was sought back in the early days of these discussions, which did not find expression in the earlier ordinance. So it's of a piece with that.
Okay. I've got a follow-up question about point 11 of your memo.
For me.
Because to me, this is perhaps the most important point that was not included in the amendment we just passed. Why is it that the city believes that the city controller should be the CIB controller? Could you or Ms. Carmichael go into the detail of that particular point?
Yeah, and Councilmember Piedmont Smith had asked about this earlier, so I'll just share what we shared with her, which is, the city controller is intimately familiar with the funds and the accounts and the record-keeping and all the requirements. He's bonded, all of that stuff. And the vast majority of the funds involved would be funds allocated to the city. It just seems to make sense rather than include someone new and potentially pay them as well. It just is drawing on someone with expertise. And again, remember, everything in here is in the spirit of saying, how do we achieve the balance between city involvement and county involvement? Because notwithstanding the 3-3 split on the CIB board that you're talking about, I think if you look back in the memos, what we had emphasized was there are certain statutory duties that fall only to the county. So this was attempting to say, that's why there was balance being sought back in the day, and this is reflecting that. So, does that help?
Thank you. Yes, it does. I'd like to send the same question to either Mr. Cockrell or Commissioner Thomas. Do you have a particular opinion about who the controller should be for the CIB and why?
I, I guess, I don't have a particular idea of who, and the reason for that is the state statute clearly says that the CIB gets to make that decision. It's, it's one of the responsibilities of that group. I, you know, I, I don't really have an opinion because my opinion would be nothing because it's that group's call.
Sure, but I mean, if, if it is, if the city is unwilling to enter into an agreement with the county over that point, does statute still apply? In other words, if we don't even enter into an agreement at all because we have a firm commitment that the controller be, the city's controller, what difference would it make if we don't form a CIB over that point?
Well, I guess if we don't form it, then we're not violating state law. I mean, I think that, that has to carry some weight. And I guess the flip side of it is, you know, you, you just, there's been a lot of statements made as why it was a good thing to use the city controller. I mean, that should all be part of that process that the CIB utilizes to, to make a decision. I mean, I, I guess their independent decision is their independent decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? And seeing, oh, Ms. Carmichael, you had a response to that question?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, President. Mary Catherine Carmichael, Mayor's Office. I, I just want to remind everybody that the administration did not pull these 15 points out of the, out of a hat. These were things that were discussed, again, by some of the very folks in this room back in 2019, a group made up of city and county officials and community members. So this, that, the point, especially, well, all of them, but that's where the genesis of that suggestion originated.
Thank you.
All right, there are no council questions. We now go to the public for the resolution that's on the table as it has been amended. Do we have anyone from Zoom who might wish to comment?
I will again invite those folks on Zoom. If you'd like to comment on Resolution 22-20 as amended, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
And we will begin in chambers.
Thank you, Eric Spoonmore, again, Chamber of Commerce. I just want to thank you guys for the very thoughtful, deliberate process that you all have used here tonight as we discuss these complex issues. This is important stuff, and I just appreciate the time that you put into it. Again, we think the most prudent option is to stick with what we know that works here in Indiana for these kinds of projects. Time really is of the essence here. This is a wonderful opportunity before us to expand this convention center. This is a wonderful opportunity for our elected leaders to come together and deliver on that promise. We urge you to move forward with the Capital Improvement Board and to get the industry experts appointed to the board and to really make this a win finally for our community. And again, thank you so much for the thought and effort that you put into these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Anyone from home?
No, I see no takers on Zoom.
Anyone else here in chambers? Seeing no more public comment, we are back to council for final comment on Resolution Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Before we get to comments, I'm going to try to slip a question in here if I can.
Go with the question.
I'm sorry. I guess what I'm, what I'm really thinking now, and I heard earlier that the city, depending on the choice, that one group or another is going to be at a disadvantage. And I guess I'm not sure what that means. So could, could somebody from city administration tell me what that disadvantage is, and then maybe someone from county executive, depending on which mechanism we choose? I guess I'm confused what, what's the disadvantage?
Would anyone like to address that question?
Of either, of, I'm sorry, of either a CIB or a 501(c)(3). And in particular, I know city administration said, well, we feel like we're at a disadvantage if we go that route. I guess I want to know what that is.
Anyone from the city administration want to take a crack at that question first?
I'll, I'll take a stab at it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carmichael.
Okay, Mary Catherine Carmichael, Office of Mayor. You know, it's interesting, the, the idea of a capital improvement board originated in the state legislature. The state legislature, as you probably know, tends to be made up more of folks outside of municipalities than inside of municipalities. So sometimes things that the legislature thinks are, are important, and, you know, we see several of those things in this particular group setup of a CIB, they tend to give, they tend to say, okay, county, you represent the county, you do this. So, for example, a couple of things we've talked about tonight is the appointment of the folks to the CBC, and, and, you know, we've got the Fab Act and, you know, all sorts of things that, the way we see it, kind of tend to favor county control. So that's why, it makes us a little uncomfortable, and we don't want to be, we don't want to put the city in a position that decisions are being made about city assets that the city doesn't have any influence over.
Does someone from the county want to respond as well?
I guess I'd respond with, you've heard the proposal of who the, the board members of the 501(c)(3) would be and who they would be appointed by. You've also heard, and I think Jeff McKim expressed it best, about the transparency issues. I think there's also a, what I consider probably another minor issue, and that was with the tort claim immunity. But I, I think, you know, it is insurable. I don't disagree with that in that I did not check on the cost of insurance, and I'm, I'm willing to defer that the city staff, when they checked on it, it said it was a marginal difference on the prices. But the, the two primary ones are the, the makeup of the board and the transparency issues.
Councilmember Volin, question or comment? Oh. Councilmember Volin.
Yeah, I want to reiterate this question that I asked during the amendment process to the administration. So Mr. Sims asked kind of the question that was on my mind too, but I want to go a little further. There were two aspects to the 501(c)(3) that seemed to be problematic. One of them, Mr. Cockrell identified is that as, as far as we know, the administration's proposal is for a board made up entirely of city-appointed members, whereas the CIB is evenly split. The second aspect of the 501(c)(3) that's relevant, the only other one that I could find in the memo, was that the city sees it as an advantage to be able to include other, let's call it tourism development opportunities in the 501(c)(3), the Buskirk, Chumley, the Waldrun, et cetera. And I think I asked earlier, why not create a 501(c)(3) anyway and handle those under a 501(c)(3), regardless of whether the convention center is also part of it? So these are the only two things that seem to distinguish the 501(c)(3) in my mind from the CIB. What can the administration say now to, I guess for lack of a better phrase, sell us on a 501(c)(3)? It does not seem particularly compelling at the moment. Ms. Carmichael, what can you say?
Well, excuse me. I'll take the point about the board membership. You know, I think whenever you enter into something or start a negotiation about something, you start at a place that you really think is great, and then you, you know, you negotiate from there. So I don't think that a 4-1 board membership is written in stone by any means, but, you know, you got to throw something out there. So, excuse me. I'll, I think I can let Beth, if she's still around, if she wants to handle the second part of your question, or Ms. Kate, if she wants to handle the second part of your question.
Beth Kate, Corporation Counsel. So the second part of your question, Councilmember Volin, I think, was what about developing a 501(c)(3) with respect to managing the other properties that were discussed earlier that is in the works? And I think one of the ideas is that it would integrate well to deal with the convention center through that same mechanism. I think there have been some conversations with council leadership about that already, but in any event, yes. So that is one of the things that we're working on and that we were thinking would make sense in terms of integration here. Does that-
Yes, it does. But now, it leads to a follow-up question. Can you see why the county might be leery of a five-member board on the CIB, all appointed by the city? It would be four by the mayor and one by the council and none by the county because the city says it's also managing its other tourism development assets under that 501(c)(3), and so that's why there has to be an all-city-appointed board. What do you say to that?
I think I would just echo what Mary Catherine said about that not being set in stone. I do understand what the county is saying about the composition of that.
I do understand what the county is saying about the composition of that. And, you know, I think, as you'll see, if you look back in the memos that we sent earlier, there's still, if we're, what we're looking for is balance. The county continues to retain all of the statutory authority you've heard a lot about today with respect to CBC appointments and, you know, control ultimately over whether the tax even exists or not. Forget the state legislature, the county could repeal it, right? So, I'm not suggesting that they would, but, I mean, it's, again, it's a matter of balance. Having said that, I think Mary Catherine said, you know, that's not a composition that, you know, can't be revisited or can't be further looked at to try to address that.
Well, I appreciate that, but, I mean, it feels like we're talking about it tonight. And so, I guess I would ask you tonight, would a 501(c)(3) with two members appointed by the city, two appointed by the county, and one appointed by the other four be acceptable to the administration?
That's, I think, I see Mary Catherine's hands, probably her question to tackle.
Either is, question goes to either of you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that question. No, I wouldn't say so, especially since this would be, excuse me, again, a city asset, so that really wouldn't make a whole lot of sense. But I would also say that it's kind of premature to negotiate this. And one other point that hasn't been brought up this evening, and I think is important in germaine, is part of our proposal in the memo is, and something we feel very strongly about, would be a broader, more represent, you know, more holistically representative advisory board to the 501(c)(3) board. So, that would include, you know, certainly representatives from county government, arts, you know, other constituencies and stakeholders. Thank you.
That would be big, would they, these are stakeholders who would serve on the board?
Advisory board.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you.
And that is included if you look, yeah, we've mentioned this in our.
Got it. I appreciate it. Thank you. That clarifies. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cockrell.
I would just like to respond, and I was talking with Commissioner Thomas, in that, you know, this CIB or 501, this entity, let's just call it an entity to keep it, they're going to have a huge task ahead of them simply dealing with the convention center. I am not, I could not tell you for certain that there is support from the county to commingle all these other different buildings into this already monumental task. I think that's another concern that we would have with that plan.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there other council questions before we can move to council comments? Seeing none, let us go to council comments. No hands are popping up. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, thank you.
Yes, I am in favor of the resolution as amended. I think a CIB is the appropriate mechanism by which to expand the convention center, and I think that the city's position is guaranteed somewhat by the amendment that we passed. I also see that we do need to act soon, and I think that county and city needs to move ahead together in good faith and make it happen. My main concern, well, I have many concerns about a 501(c)(3), but transparency is a big concern, and also, that's not what we talked about back in 2019 and 2020, so it kind of came out of nowhere, even for me, being on city council, when this was proposed earlier this year. So, the, well, I'll just leave it at that. I think that the food and beverage tax has been collected, and it does need to be spent on the purposes that, for which the tax was passed by the county, and we should move ahead, and I believe the CIB is the best mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Volan.
This has been hard for both the city council and the county council. I remember in 2019, coming into a very tense situation, but frankly, the entire past two terms has been this tension between the city and county executives. And I continue to be very frustrated by it. I mean, I want to remind my friends in the county that they stood vehemently against the city's effort to annex, and it was a pyrrhic battle. I'm not even sure who won it. But, you know, the administration has also seemed to be backfooted here by the proposal tonight. I mean, I'm reading the memo tonight about the 501(c)(3) option, and I, I'm not seeing the compelling argument for it. I mean, there's been a lot of distrust between the two entities, and I've commented with my colleagues here and with our colleagues in the county council about the, just the years-long set of distrust that has existed at the top. And I, you know, beside everything else, I'm so sick of it. I'm so sick of it, and I want to see more cooperation at the top. But, the, you know, like, at the same time that I believe that the administration has made some good points that were excluded in the amendment that Councilmember Piedmont Smith tabled, particularly, I think that it is a legitimate concern of the administration that I support, I agree with about the tax money coming in. The lion's share of the tax money comes to the city, and, you know, we have a track record of very good controllers. And it's important that the controller, who is at once a cabinet member of an administration who's not separately elected and has a fiduciary responsibility, you know, as assigned by the state, unique among cabinet members in the city, that, and, I mean, set aside the character of the current treasurer, Mr. Underwood, whom we all, on this side at least, greatly esteem, that it is not unreasonable at all to ask the city controller, be the CIB controller. Their concern for independent audits is one that I share as well, and this was not included in the amendment. But we're being asked to make a decision tonight. There was a resolution table tonight. I don't think that the looming possibility of the tax being repealed is as big a deal as what both the county and the city have, people from all sides have said, we need to get on with it. If we wait, I don't like being rushed. I know that everybody on this side is familiar with my desire for more time to consider. But in this case, if we, even if we were to put it off a week, let alone into January, we'd have to revisit the whole thing over again. We're putting it off, I mean, our recess is going to be a month. We're literally not going to be here for a month. And I do just want to get on with it. I don't think, I think the administration had a chance to make their case for a 501(c)(3) and, tonight, and they just, it hasn't, it's been good but not enough. So, I'm going to be voting for this resolution because I do want to get on with it. I, let, just, I'm going to share the administration's concerns, as I've said, but, and there's still a lot of trust that needs to be built, and I hate that I have to say it, but there's been a lot of distrust between the two entities that shouldn't exist. I'm very surprised to hear Commissioner Thomas say something that I've been thinking in my head for a while, that city residents are part of the county. Very surprised, because I've been thinking it for a long time, because I haven't felt that message coming from the county for a long time. The city of Bloomington was created by Monroe County 200 years ago. We wouldn't exist without action by the county. We exist to be the county seat, and yet, there's been this much contention here, partly because of statutes that we had no, no, no hand in creating, okay? The state tells us how to be municipality, how to be a county. The fact that the city has so many additional powers compared to a county isn't the city's fault. So, you know, I want to just add a word of sympathy for the administration, which is doing the best it can. But, like, I am, I don't care about the tax being repealed as much as I care about getting on with it already. I'm going to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I'm going to vote to support the CIB, and let me tell you why. I think the CIB structure is a superior structure to a 501(c)(3), as it's spelled out. In the administration's proposal and talking about the following components are essential to any prospective CIB, I want this process to move along, and I want it to get done, as well as some of my colleagues have mentioned that same thing. I see that the structure, first of all, pointing all five, that's not fair, and it's not a neutral way to go. I see that from points two through about nine on the essential to any CIB memo, it's approval by, I'm going to cut it short, but approved by county and city fiscal bodies for budgets, for bonds, for this, approval by city and county, selecting contract, authorization by city and county for the CIB to decide something else, and then a couple other things. I'm afraid this looks like a very slow process, and it looks like, one, it's going to be very contentious, and it's natural that we have differing opinions and differing interests in the county and the city. I get that. I think we all get that. So, the 501(c)(3) is just not, the way it's structured right now, the way it looks to me, and I've read this several times from different directions, it just doesn't look fair. And because of that, I think the taxpayers deserve, you know, countywide, people that have contributed to this, I think they deserve a fairer process. It's fairer. I think they deserve one that's more transparent, and it's in statute, and more neutral. And it appears to me that the CIB is a more neutral entity to try to administer these things. And so, so because of that, those are my reasons for supporting the CIB. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Final comments? Councilmember Sims. Then Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. First thing I want to thank, Mr. Cockrell, Ms. Kate, Ms. Carmichael, and even Mr. Campbell for your comments and participating. I found it helpful. I remember years ago, I want to say 2019 or something, I don't know, I thought we were meeting in the basement of Convention Center. It was a group of city-state, or city-county stakeholders, some elected people. I do remember, not in great bunch of detail, but we did discuss a 501(c)(3). That was part of the discussion. Now, there was no commitment, but we did CIB as well. We talked about the bridge across Third Street, possibly as part of the design. We talked about a hotelier that was picked, and then somebody didn't like, you know, I mean, I remember all that, and that's been a long time ago. I guess where I'm going here at this point is, I've heard terms of good faith. I'm not so sure how we get there, based on everything else that we've gone. It seems like good faith is evasive right now. One of, I guess I wonder sometimes why, in this particular case, why we just couldn't put city executives and our attorneys and county executives and their legal folks and put them in a room and say, work this out? Seems pretty simple to me. Take them one by one, one by one, and negotiate. Now, if you get to some point, say, this is a deal breaker, that's fine. One of the things I kind of resent a little bit, if that hasn't been done, and I don't know, but then it's brought to us to be the arbiter, one way or another. And I just think there's more work that could have been done, I think, at those executive levels, to work this stuff out. You can't get everything you want. What is the best mechanism for us to move forward? I think that's what the gist tonight is. What is the best mechanism for us to move forward? There's some details. I don't have a real, I would prefer audits by the State Board of Accounts. Just local government, that's my preference. Now, would I divorce myself from that conversation, and we say we're going to do audit by an independent auditor? No. I mean, we'll still get audited. That's just my preference. But that should be a deal breaker or one of the deal breakers in deciding to move forward on this. A couple of things that's been said, and I think we just need to work through some stuff. I'm like Councilmember Volan, my colleague, that says, you know, I'm really glad to hear that the county folks say, you know, you're all county folks. Yeah, I've heard it before. If he hadn't, I've heard. But I've also heard on the other side, the city people are 80% of the county. The city, 80%. But we're all county. You see how divisive that is? I mean, as long as we hold on to that rhetoric, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough. So, I don't know. Do I have the authority, Ms. President? I'll just lock them up in a room, say, come up to an agreement, and come see us when they get done.
No.
And do it before December 31st or January 1st.
Out of order.
Out of, thank you. There's been a lot of talk, state legislators, we've been hearing this for a while, and they do get in our business where we want to say they do or don't, or shouldn't be afraid. They have proven that they will, and they will again. I have no doubt in that. And I like this word my colleague used a couple weeks ago, agnostic. I'm rather agnostic in whether to indicate to the legislator that we're making forward or moving forward, I don't think it makes a difference whether it's CIB or a 501(c)(3), if you want to make that indication. But I think the best way for us to move forward, that I think the majority of us can work with and hopefully resolve moving forward, is the CIB at this point. And that's the way I'm probably going to vote this evening. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I have a few thoughts around this. You know, mostly, my main thought here is that five days has not been long enough for me to dig into the details of a CIB or a 501(c)(3), and three hours tonight has most definitely not been enough time to, for me to do what I would consider an appropriate amount of due diligence on where this, where this should be going right now, or what I support and what I don't support. So, I'm having a very hard time with all of this tonight, I would say, just that I think it's rushed and that there was a sense of urgency put on this unnecessarily. There was a lot of talk tonight about pre-COVID, post-COVID, and, yes, I remember pre-COVID, I sat in a room in public meetings and started hashing all of this out, and I really appreciated being invited to that. being invited to that and being part of that process. I don't understand why, post-COVID, it had to come to this forum, I guess, for support instead of being invited again and being in a room with city and county officials and working it out in that way. I, I think I most echo Councilmember Sims' comment tonight, that I wish this, I guess could have been done either potentially without us or with us in a, in a different way. I am still in a place where I am asking bigger questions, I think, than should a convention center expansion be done with CIB or a 501(c)(3). Just looking at a document on convention centers over the last 20 years, it, I'm just scrolling for a second here. What I've read is 1989 to 2022, we've, the nation has doubled convention center space while convention center events have declined. And I can't imagine what that looks like now after COVID. Also, you know, we haven't talked at all about, I mean, because this isn't really the space, I guess, tonight, because we're just talking about CIB versus 501(c)(3), but Indianapolis expanding its convention center to take on the type of conventions we are hoping to host, but then having that space in an airport and the infrastructure to support it, we don't have an airport for people to come there. I mean, I just have a hard time. Also, post-COVID, what do residents of the county and the city think now? Is that how they want to be spending their tax dollars? Or would they rather them go to something else to fund their tax? I think it's been a long time, can go to anything related to tourism. So, I have a lot of questions still around the whole idea of a convention center, and I mean, not just this CIB versus 501(c)(3). So, tonight, because I do not feel it already, I will abstain or vote no. And that's where I am. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. I'm going to vote to support the resolution. I wasn't going to mention this, but Councilmember Rosenbarger did, so I thought I would just bring it up, because I think she has a good point, which is that like, there's a lot that follows from this, not only about how to govern things, but about the scale of expansion and about the responsibility of, of that fiscally, for this body and others. There's a lot of talk about when the tax was passed, this was the intention, and I think while no legislative body or fiscal body can bind future bodies simply, you know, with their intention, there's something meaningful there still. But I think it's worth thinking about all those things. And sort of serendipitously, I was at the Commission on Sustainability meeting last night, and someone brought up the 2021 community survey that the city does, representative sample of city residents, statistically significant numbers. And it was in another context, but I was looking at the survey and I was scrolling through it, and I got to a question that talked about projects or issues in Bloomington and how important they are. We have recovery from COVID, 92% said it's essential or very important. Investing time and resources to ensure equal and fair delivery of all city services, 83%. Citywide high-speed fiber, 68%. Redevelopment of the Hopewell Hospital site, 57%. Expansion of Bloomington Monroe County Convention Center, 16%. Of a representative sample of Bloomington, thought that was essential or very important. So, I just wanted to add that context in the context of what Councilmember Rosenbarger said. Again, not because I don't think this has some, some legs to do something, but I think we need to be very careful about the scope and scale and fiscal responsibility of, of some of the decisions that follow from this. Thank you.
I will take this opportunity to say that, I'll cut to the chase, I do support Resolution 22-20 for a lot of reasons. I want to just remark a little bit about this long journey that's been interrupted by COVID. But a lot of the comments that I've heard, many of them offline as well as in public meetings, seems to me we've kind of pitted the city and the county in a, in a battle of control versus cooperation. And I think Councilmember Volin spoke to the tensions that exist now between the city and the county, and I'm just as disgusted with that as, as, as he is. It is time for us to start working together, not who wants it more, who can do it better, who's got the lion's share of the food and beverage tax, therefore we should have the dominant control over how this goes. We've, we've been at this for six years and they're not moving it forward. And then on November 9th, the county did. So, that's what we have in front of us today, is let's move this forward. The word of the day in that last meeting that Councilmembers Scambalory and I attended was dithering. And whether 16% of the community thinks this is important or not, these food and beverage taxes have been leveraged for this purpose, to assist the CVP, to assist the convention center in making it the best it can possibly be. The expansion is something that is needed. It has been a point of discussion for over six years. But now, the county has given us a mechanism to move it forward. And they have managed this convention center for 30 years. And so, I think they do have a pretty invested stake in how this goes. I think they want the best product that it can be, as well as does the city. So, this dithering over who has more control, I think we're all finished with that. Turf issues, I think we're all finished with that. I hope we are. And it is now time to take the food and beverage tax, the innkeeper's tax, and to allow a CIB with professional status to make all the decisions that, that need to be made in order to move this forward. So, thank you very much. Anybody else have any final word? Councilmember Rallo, sorry, didn't see your hand.
That's quite right. I decided to comment a bit late because this is a really interesting comments and discussion. I wanted to tag along with Councilmember Flaherty, I think that the, these are important questions, the scope and scale, but I wanted to also add that when the FAB tax was, when it was supported, it was supported in no small part because of discussions related to the expectation of a civic center, convention center. Therefore, you know, I, I think that that needs to be focused on as well, that this is a community, should be the intent, community civic center, convention center. And I would like to restart that discussion. But I'll be supporting this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no hands, we will ask the clerk to please call the roll on Resolution 22-20 as amended. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Rallo.
Yes.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
No.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes eight, one, zero. Thank you, everyone who's been here this evening to help us deliberate and take this important vote. Thank you. All right, moving on. We are ready for our next two ordinances.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2236 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ordinance 2236 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding proposal to amend Chapter 20.02 zoning districts and related sections to establish an overlay district and related development standards for the Hopewell neighborhood. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains a text amendment that proposes to add the transform redevelopment overlay to the Unified Development Ordinance in order to address the...
Point of order. I apologize.
I think I might be reading the wrong...
We didn't take a vote. We needed to do a roll call before you do that. It's late, I know.
I'm so sorry, y'all.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Got a little over excited. So, intro, let's see. We'll start with Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Volin.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Ann Sandberg.
Yes.
Okay. Now, will the clerk please read?
Okay. Ordinance 2236 to amend Title 20, oh goodness, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding proposal to amend Chapter 20.02 zoning districts and related sections to establish an overlay district and related development standards for the Hopewell neighborhood. The synopsis says as follows. This petition contains a text amendment that proposes to add the transform redevelopment overlay to the Unified Development Ordinance in order to address the change in Resolution 2217.
Thank you. I'm in charge.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2236 be adopted.
Seconded. All right, very good. And with us this evening to present, I assume, we have Planning and Transportation to give us the rundown.
Yeah, from the Transportation Planning Services Manager here to present. Hang on, trying to share my screen.
And make sure you are right up in front of your microphones so everybody can hear you.
All right, so, we are here to discuss the transform redevelopment overlay. So, first question is the, what is the overlay? What is an overlay? So, an overlay district is a type of zoning district which is placed over an existing zoning district or a combination of other zoning districts. The boundaries of an overlay are often selected to protect environmental features, preserve historic buildings, or promote economic and residential development within an area. So, the regulations and boundaries of an overlay district allow for focused regulations to be tailored to an area within the city which share unique characteristics. The regulations within an overlay may be more or less restrictive than the underlying base zoning district and will supersede the regulations of that base zoning district within the specified regulations in the overlay ordinance. So, the city actually has a existing overlay. It's the downtown character overlay. It's split up into six, it was introduced in the 2019 UDO update, as you may recall. It's split up into six distinct character areas. There's the Courthouse Square, Downtown Core, University Village, Downtown Edges, Downtown Gateway, and the Showers Technology Park. So, yes, those all exist currently as, as is. They all each have their own regulations regarding building setback, impervious surface coverage, architecture, and allowed uses, which ensure that the developments are compatible with the historic downtown. So, with that, this body authored Resolution 1722, which gave planned commission guidance on eight specific topics. These are the eight topics. I'll cover how they are addressed in the overlay. So, all subdivisions within the overlay are required to be designed according to the infill subdivision, which is in Chapter 5 of the UDO, which is the subdivision control portion, as amended within the overlay. So, the amended standards require that 100% of lots be served by an alley. Additionally, all properties within the overlay shall be required to utilize a platted alley for motor vehicle access, access to the property. Drive cuts will be prohibited when a platted alley is adjacent to the property. The combination of changes will ensure that all newly created lots in any adjacent to an existing alley will be required to derive access from that alley, or from an alley, excuse me. So, this will severely reduce the number and hopefully eliminate the number of drive cuts within the overlay district. So, the resolution identified four specific dimensional standards that were to be modified. The first two are adjustments to the maximum impervious surface coverage and the minimum landscaped area. So, within the mixed-use and non-residential zone properties within the overlay, there is an allowed, excuse me, they are allowed to increase their impervious surface maximum by 25 percentage points to the underlying base zoning district. Residential zone properties will be allowed to increase their impervious surface by 15%. So, these areas are in, or excuse me, these increases are in addition to the standards of the underlying base zoning district. For example, a property within the underlying base zoning district of mixed-use medium-scale MM would be allowed an 85% maximum impervious surface coverage, rather, which would be up from the MM district's base of 60%. And then you can see the landscape area minimum was modified to meet the new impervious surface. So, it's changed the, the same percentage. The resolution guidance called for reduced side and rear setbacks. Side setbacks are proposed to be reduced to zero feet. Rear setbacks in the mixed-use and non-residential zone districts will be set at zero feet, while the residential zoning districts' rear setback will be 10 feet. And a reduction to minimum lot size has been included that will eliminate the minimum lots area for mixed-use and non-residential zoning districts, and then in the minimum, excuse me, the minimum lot area in residential zoning districts will be 1,500 square feet. In addition to that, the minimum lot width in the district throughout will be 35 feet. And then, just as a note, similar to the R4 district, excuse me, the RM and RH district, that would be residential multifamily and residential high-density multifamily, single-family, duplex, triplex, and fourplex dwelling units will actually have to match the R4 district standards rather than the specified under, excuse me, the specified overlay district standards. All right, so, the, there was a call for the elimination of parking requirements. We did that through this simple sentence. So, the resolution identified the need for pedestrian-scale development standards for first-floor residential uses. This will be achieved in a number of ways within the overlay. The first is that multifamily dwellings along a street identified in the transportation plan as a main street, shared street, or general urban, as well as those along the Beeline Trail, will be required to be set back 20 feet behind the building's facade, front-facing facade. So, this matches what's in the greater downtown, specifically downtown edges and areas like that. So, this standard present, prevents dwelling units from being located directly adjacent to the most well-traveled streets within the overlay. So, as proposed with the, in the next ordinance, that would be, that would apply to Second Street and Rogers. Dwelling units will have a front building wall which faces a street, or excuse me, dwelling units which have a front building wall that faces a street will be raised two to five feet above the sidewalk level. So, this will raise windows and some private entrances along sidewalks, increasing privacy from the street, and still allowing windows to be built along the building facade. Activated front setbacks are required, so front-back setbacks will be, not be allowed to generate dead space and will be required to provide landscaping or outdoor commercial uses, which will promote walkability. Primary buildings will be required to include a courtyard equal to 5% of the building's total footprint. The courtyard will have to be visible from the sidewalk and will provide a visual break in building facade and activate space. Ground floor residential facades will be required to be at least 20% glass or framed facade. This will reduce the amount of blank uninterrupted walls while still offering some privacy for dwelling units along the ground floor. And then, the maximum building floor plate within the overlay will be limited to 5,000 square feet without achieving affordable housing incentives. This will reduce the length of buildings and breakup facades more often. All right, so, these are the eight items that the resolution gave guidance for. And then, planning in, planning transportation in reviewing the, and crafting the ordinance, we proposed a couple of extra ones that we believe meet the comprehensive plans goals and will hopefully promote desirable developments. So, the first is a modification to the allowed use table, which will expand permitted uses to include more dwelling uses. So, this will... So this will, these uses will be permitted to, with use-specific standards anywhere within the overlay. Other uses that are seen as incompatible with higher-density residential areas have been excluded. You can see the list here. New specifics, use-specific standards have been proposed for multifamily dwellings and restaurant uses within the overlay. Due to the increased impervious surface coverage, properties within the overlay, a standard to require that all entrances and drives and surface-level parking lots be constructed solely of permeable pavers has been included. The list of primary and secondary exterior finished materials has been expanded to give greater flexibility in design. Additionally, developments will be required to provide street lighting. The requirement for pedestrian entrances has been reconfigured to be clearer and provide an allowance for innovative design options. New regulations on exterior facades present, prevent blank walls has been proposed. These include a minimum window percentage for grounded upper-floor limits, a requirement for awnings to be over a certain percentage of the facade, and then a requirement that each multifamily dwelling unit have direct access to a covered balcony, patio, or porch that overlooks a common area or public space. There's a modification to the landscaping standards to promote healthy vegetation growth within the area that allows for a greater impervious surface coverage than elsewhere. And then the maximum parking allowance within the overlay has been decreased by 50%. The maximum floor plate for properties within the overlay has been limited to 5,000 square feet without the use of incentives. So the incentives have actually been modified slightly from what they currently are. If you achieve, if a developer were to achieve affordable or sustainable development incentives, they can increase their maximum floor plate to 10,000 square feet. If they achieve both, they can do 20,000 square feet. Additionally, there is an increase for height that exists elsewhere in the UDO but has been modified again. If you, if a developer were to achieve Tier 1 projects, they would be allowed an primary structure height of an additional two stories. Same for Tier 2. And then if you were to achieve both Tier 1 and Tier 2, you would get both, so you could have four additional stories potentially. And then if you obtain the housing incentive, or affordable housing incentives as well as the sustainability incentives, you would get that extra half that you already would get in the UDO. And then the, a new feature of the overlay, only within the overlay, is departures. So departures have been added in order to allow greater flexibility in architectural design. Departures will join other similar flexibility and relief procedures, including minor modifications and variances as an alternative mean of, means of compliance. Departures are intended to allow for form-based adjustments to the requirements of the UDO. The departure must meet the goals and the specific standards while achieving or providing exceptional architectural design, something that would not otherwise be allowed specifically. So requests for departures are required to receive approval from the Director of Planning and Transportation prior to being reviewed by a Plan Commission. The Director must find that a site and building design offer a unique and beneficial design, and all site plans which require a departure must be reviewed under the requirements of a major site plan approval, which means they will go to Plan Commission for final approval. Each departure within a site plan must be reviewed by Plan Commission and found to meet all of the proposed criteria. These criteria will ensure that the departure does not interfere with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan or other adopted plans, will provide adequate public services, will not create hardship on adjacent properties unless adequately mitigated, and that the departures are technical in nature and are required to provide an exceptional architectural design, which will enhance the visual appeal of the building, significantly enhancing the perceived quality of the building facade from the street and strengthen the public-private intersection, or interaction at the street level. So the standards of the overlay were intentionally designed by this planning staff to allow for future expansion of the overlay, either within the Hopewell neighborhood, its master plan itself, master plan area itself, or within other areas in the city. The Comprehensive Plan, as you well know, has several areas that have been identified as focus areas, one of which is the Hopewell neighborhood. These areas were designated as focus areas to encourage public and private investment as, and to encourage residential growth, economic growth, and other, other things that these other areas would not provide. So the standards of the transform redevelopment overlay were designed to encourage the same investments and growth, so the overlay will become an additional tool for Plan Commission and this body to achieve the goals of the city. All right, so with that, the Plan Commission voted seven to zero to forward this petition to Common Council with favorable recommendation. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And before we come to council questions, I understand there's an amendment, one sponsored by Councilmember Smith, that deals with some housekeeping Scrivener errors.
Thank you very much. I was just going to mention that. Yeah, I was asked to be a sponsor for some technical corrections that were just omissions and typographical errors. Do I need to read the list of corrections?
So that was in our second packet, a dim dim?
It was.
And again, there's nothing significant other than these Scrivener errors and housekeeping.
Correct.
So do we have a second for Amendment 1? All right, moved and seconded, and any questions from council on that? I mean, if you haven't had a chance to read the packet, I suppose you could go over some highlights, but if we don't need to do that, we'll go to the public to see if there are any comments.
I will invite anyone watching on Zoom. If you'd like to offer comment on Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2236, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can also send a chat to the meeting host.
I don't imagine there are too many hands flying up.
I see no takers.
We will come back to council for final comment on Amendment 1. And seeing no final comment, let us ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
And that passes 9-0-0, so now we are back to council questions on the ordinance as amended. Councilmember Volin?
Thanks for the presentation. This is an exciting new development. Of course, my questions are about parking. They always are. You referenced a reduction in the maximum parking of 50%. Could you please repeat that point?
Yeah, absolutely. Any maximum parking requirement in the UDO has been reduced by half within the overlay.
Can you tell us what that means practically? Because I can't find the table. I have the UDO up, but I can't search it to find the table that it amends. What is the maximum parking requirement currently in that area?
It depends on use. It's use-based parking, so I can't give an answer for each individual use, but it's often one per, I think, 300 square feet, something like that, or 3,000, excuse me.
Okay, so it depends on the use?
Yes.
In other words, okay. All right, but just to reiterate, there is no longer a minimum parking requirement in this overlay with, as a result of this ordinance?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Rubling, I had a conversation with somebody after it was previewed at a works, Councilball or something. How does this affect, how does the overlay affect existing buildings and business functions that are there now?
So it should have no effect. The UDO has rules for compliance on properties. It doesn't retroactively do anything. So if they were to change their use or expand their use, I think, depends on the exact rules, but it's often 30%. If you were to expand or change a use, then you have to come into limited compliance or full compliance. That's when the new overlay rules may apply. It depends on the exact use that you're doing. Single-family houses wouldn't have an issue with that, for example.
Yeah, I think this gentleman's, most concerns were, he has a building in that area, and he was worried about the alleys and all that, and he was concerned that this might mean that those were going to be changed, or he was going to have to, you know, something different was going to happen, and considering it a burden on him. And so I promised I would ask him, you know, during regular session, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say that, yes, he came to Plan Commission, we heard him speak, and yes, his use should never be affected unless it were to be deactivated for a certain amount of time and reactivated. So I don't, I don't believe his issue is an actual issue that he has to worry about anytime soon.
Wonderful. Thanks for that clarification. I'm sure that'll make him feel good. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. Rubling, for that presentation. A couple of questions regarding parking. The existing parking garage has a capacity of, what is it, 300? 300 spaces?
I believe it's around there, but I think it might be a little bit more. I'm not 100%, sorry.
Okay, so those exist on site. How would that be utilized? Is there been any, is there anything definitive about that?
This is Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. Councilmember Rallo, no, there has been no decision on that time for the garage. It currently is not under city ownership, so that is something that we can continue to work on, on how to utilize that garage, but it is in good condition. And that's something that these standards, we can work with developers on how they could utilize that garage, and that was one of the reasons why the garage was retained on the site, is so that we could leverage that to allow for lower parking and more urban development.
Okay. Could I continue with a couple brief questions? Madam Chair? So regarding the, going from a maximum of 5,000 square feet per building plate to 10,000 or 20,000 in terms of incentives, would this, this would presumably affect building facades and carve-outs and courtyards, et cetera? Would it? Or are those to be maintained in building facades?
Maybe you don't understand the question. If you could restate, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're talking about incentives for building size plate, right? So we've got incentives in place for sustainability or for affordable housing. I'm wondering how that affects the facade of the buildings? In other words, you know, you're going to have a larger, a larger building, would assume.
Okay, yes, yes. If you were to achieve the incentives, you could expand the facade of the building, definitely, yes.
Okay.
And so, yeah. Things like the courtyard would expand at the same rate. It's 5% of the building floor plate, no matter what that number is, for instance.
Oh, it would? Okay.
Yes.
You know, my last question is about the material allowed use. Could you go back to that? Because I had just said a, probably a minor question, but one of the, one of the allowed materials was stucco, I think? That is not equivalent to ephes, is it?
No. Ephes is still specifically barred. It's a prohibitive.
Okay.
Facade material.
Okay, so this is some other material that isn't, well, I would assume it's, durability is going to be better than ephes, which is very poor. Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other council questions? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Rallo's question about the facades of buildings that, where the developer has taken advantage of one of the incentives, and so it's, I thought 15,000 was the largest? Can it get up to 20,000 square feet?
Yes, if you achieve both tiers, yes.
And so for the downtown overlay, we have rules about when there are, you know, larger facades, longer facades, that there has to be articulation and variance, variation of depth and things like that. Are there rules like that here in this overlay as well?
They, no, they've been replaced by the addition of the courtyard and other items like that. They were removed because we hear a lot from architects and developers that they produce the same building every time to meet those requirements. So this is, for lack of a better word, a test experiment type, so that we get the same results, but without the, you know, cookie cutter design, hopefully. That's potential, or partially the goal, I should say.
Could you explain a little more how the interior courtyards and, I don't, I didn't catch what the other thing was, that how the overlay would prevent kind of a monolithic same facade over an extended length?
Yeah, so the goal of the courtyard was that you would break up the facade through an actual physical means. And then the, within the setback, or excuse me, the build-to range for the front setback, you are allowed to go in and out of that and encouraged through the use of the courtyard and the front setback landscaping requirement. So we're trying to achieve similar goals of breaking up the building, the monolithic building, but not doing it through architectural requirements, but doing a physical replacement or physical space requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Volin?
A quick question to follow up on Table 410. There are quite a few parking uses that have no upper limit. How would you do 50% of no upper limit?
Well, 50% of infinity is infinity, I suppose, would be my response, so.
So you're saying that, for example, a commercial laundry has no limit, and a commercial laundry could go there and have as, as much parking as, there's no limit?
Correct, yes.
And you think that's okay?
I don't suspect a commercial laundry is coming, but I do understand the question, and that is something we could look at at the spring update of the UDO, and in fact, I suspect it is something Development Services is reviewing, so.
So you're saying that Development Services is working on removing the no limits?
It's definitely been discussed. I can't promise as they're not here. It's just me, sorry. But yes, I suspect it's been a thing since you brought it up during the original, that 2019 update.
Yes, I'm glad you remembered. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo, you have a hand up, or is that your hand up from before?
I do. I forgot to ask about the architectural design and quality that's going to be essentially presented to the planning staff. Planning staff is going to make some decisions about the quality before it goes to the Plan Commission, I assume. And I'm wondering, by the time it goes to the Plan Commission, are they going to have just two-dimensional renderings? I remember there, we had some discussion in the past about 3D, you know, models of development proposals, petitions, that would give the Plan Commissioners a sense of the size and the, and the scale of these, of these buildings, and how they relate to one another, and what they may look like. Could you just talk a little bit about the process of determining the architectural quality? And what sort of, what judgments are you making? making in that process? Under what criteria?
Sure. So I'll answer the second part. First, the criteria have been added. They hopefully are clear, but the, for what's submitted, the same rules as apply elsewhere in the UDO apply here, and Plan Commission always has the right to ask the petitioner for extra information, whether that be the 3D model, which is required, for instance, in the downtown, or architectural details. They can ask for modifications or changes and just to continue it. And the same applies to the director. So if the director receives something that they don't believe meets, then they can ask for further details, architectural or otherwise.
Okay, and then you're going to have renderings that are two-dimensional, or will you require something more than that?
So the, it's open-ended intentionally, so that you can request which, whatever you believe you need to answer the question.
Okay. And I assume that that will include at least a full round of the buildings. In other words, you know, all sides of the building will be considered in terms of its architecture. Is that, is that true?
I suspect, yes, I 100% expect that to happen, but I can't say for certain, since it's up to them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? Before we go to the public, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find the section, the ordinance, but you had mentioned that the, for residential uses, there's a setback requirement of the actual living units. So what is the rationale behind that? And, yeah, let me start with that and then follow up.
Sure. So the rationale is, it only applies to the identified streets in the thoroughfare plan, which means they are well-traveled. So this is to combat the issue you kind of see in the downtown. Not too far along here on Morton, there are apartments right on the street. You can see right into that, and then you basically, they shutter the window permanently. So we were trying to encourage usable space, but that is not a dwelling unit, essentially. So it can be a lobby or a hallway, but it just won't be someone's home. And that'll be setback from the busier streets. Along, you know, less well-traveled streets, there's some flexibility within that. But the idea was only along heavily-traveled streets where we expect lots of walkers, lots of bicycle travelers, lots of cars, that you wouldn't be able to easily see into someone's home.
Thank you. So my follow-up then is, is there anything in here to prevent what I see, like at Stage Yard Apartments, 300 block of South Walnut, where you're just looking at an empty hallway?
No, there's nothing, yeah. So that same rule is the rule we borrowed, modified, but that same 20-foot setback from the building facade for dwelling units.
Okay. Do we, in any part of the UDO or any part of the city, do we require public art or some kind of more interesting pedestrian, pedestrian-facing facade for residential?
We do not. There's no, no requirement elsewhere in the UDO either.
Okay, interesting. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we go to the public? Seeing none, let's make the announcement, see if anyone on Zoom wants to comment. Anyone here in chambers?
Yes, I'll extend the invitation again to folks on Zoom. If you'd like to comment on ordinance 2236, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your, in your control bar, under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. And I see no, no hands going up at the moment.
Back to council for any final comments. Councilmember Volin.
Just a quick point of order. The people who are on Zoom are much more audible than people in the room, and I just ask everyone who's got a microphone to get closer to it, or maybe we can up the volume a little bit. I don't, I don't know. All I know is that it's much less difficult to hear Zoom speakers than it is people in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's assume no public comment, and we'll come back to council. Any final statement? And if there's, yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Just very grateful to thank you to staff for the presentation and your work on this. I think Mr. Lucas said that this is sort of the first time in memory that the council has directed a change of some kind to the UDO, and I appreciate that it's a systems-level thing, setting the rules, adjusting those types of, thank you, adjusting those types of parameters. I also like the forward-looking, forward-thinking approach that staff took with, with respect to an overlay that might, we might learn something from and that can be used elsewhere also. It's been sort of a persistent problem in the downtown for first-floor residential uses, to have that three-foot, five-foot setback, zero-foot vertical raise, living room or bedroom, that sort of is not a pleasant place to live, and, and it's very awkward to sort of pass by. So that minimum vertical rise will, will help on that. So I think it's a lot, and similarly, you know, reducing parking minimums, seeing what the appetite is among developers, to cater to folks who, who don't need that, like the formerly, what was formerly called the bicycle apartments, you know, at Madison and, and Fourth, things like that. So it's, it's a good trial to see some of that as well, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Volin.
I want to echo Councilmember Flaherty's comments, and say that I think that what we're looking at with the TRO is the future of the area that has increasingly grown under the definition downtown, that the ideas in it are good for pretty much every aspect of downtown, not simply the Hopewell overlay, but it's a great place to demonstrate some of the details. Again, parking is just one example. There's a lot of expectations that we have about parking that are just not founded. We certainly haven't seen any detriment in the development south of Fourth Street that have happened since minimum parking requirements were removed from Fourth Street back in the first UDO. So I'm excited to see how this turns out. It's a great opportunity with a relatively blank canvas of Hopewell. I'll also point out that if there's a logic to keeping the parking garage from the hospital, it's the same logic, the only really valid logic behind the Trades District Garage, which was that by building it and centralizing the expectation that there would be a demand for structured parking, and centralizing it in a single building, that the buildings that will be built near it would not need to add their own structured parking, which is a very expensive and relatively valueless component of a typical apartment or office building. So if that garage can be surrounded by apartment buildings and office buildings that find themselves not needing to add structured parking, the developer benefits. The people renting office space or buying condos or renting apartments in them benefit from not having to pay extra for the embedded cost of parking. The structured parking in the building, everyone benefits from development immediately around and nearby to that garage, that S2 parking as a result. So I'm very excited about what's going to happen, and I'm looking forward to seeing the results in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rosenberg.
I just have a very brief comment to add. I am very happy and thank everyone for working on this. I'm looking forward to these changes in this district. One thing to point out is the change to minimum lot size for, for properties down to 1,500 square feet. I think that's really exciting, because I think a lot of folks might want to own or rent a property but not have all that land to take care of. So very excited to see how that turns out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no more comment, let us ask the clerk to please call the roll on ordinance 22-36, as amended. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Rosenbarger. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you. That's 900. That passes. Thank you very much. And then, of course, to accompany, we have our next ordinance.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2237 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And will the clerk please read? Ordinance 2237, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by adding the transform redevelopment overlay to certain below-described property. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2237 would add a zoning overlay to properties in the Hopewell neighborhood located in and around the former Indiana University Hospital location.
I move that ordinance 2237 be adopted.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. And Mr. Robling, did you already present the TRO information in your, in your initial presentation, or do we need to do, do some more?
I didn't, but it's, I have a brief, one-slide explanation of the map you guys proposed.
Very good.
The resolution that you passed with 2217, excuse me, you also authored this map, which is shown here in red. So there, I'll save the rest of my presentation.
Okay, caught me off-guard. All right, questions regarding that very brief presentation? It's a map. See, and Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I, I just kind of overlaid that map with the zoning map to see which zoning districts are, exist within those boundaries. And so I'm just curious, there's a strip there just south of Maple Street. That's MI mixed institutional. Is that an area where Bloomington Hospital is still going to have some property, or what's the institutional nature of that? Can you remind us?
Yes, that is a portion of the hospital that will remain for a while, at least.
Okay, so that's still IU Health?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will go to, oh, Councilmember Volin, sorry.
To follow up on Councilmember Piedmont Smith's question, will that, once IU Health gives up that area, will it then revert to the TRO?
Yes, it will have that applied no matter what.
Okay, it just doesn't apply to them because they're institutional?
No, it, it does. It, this overlay would apply to the MI district.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's go to the public, see if we have any public comment.
Yes, if there are members in the public that would like to offer comment on ordinance 2237, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can also send a chat to the meeting host, and we will recognize you that way. And I see no takers at the moment.
With no public comment, back to council. Any final comment, or shall we call the roll? Looks like we are ready for the clerk to please call the roll on ordinance 22-37. Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That passes 900. And Mr. Robling and Mr. Robinson, we thank you very much. We are now ready for legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2238 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. And will the clerk please read? Ordinance 2238, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning an 87.12-acre property from mixed-use employment to mixed-use institutional regarding the northeast corner of West Fullerton Pike and South State Road 37. Monroe County Government petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2238 would rezone 87.12 acres from mixed-use employment to mixed-use institutional. Thank you. And ordinance 22-38 will be referred to the regular session on December 21st next week.
I move that appropriation ordinance 2206 be read by the clerk, introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved and seconded. Will the, will you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And appropriation ordinance 22-06 will be referred to the regular session on December 21st. Oh, I'm sorry, will the clerk please read? Yes, appropriation ordinance 2206, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, general revenue annual appropriation bonds of 2022, together with all investment earnings thereon, for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to the costs of certain capital improvements for public safety facilities, and paying miscellaneous costs in connection with the foregoing and the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof, and approving an agreement of the Bloomington Redevelopment Commission to purchase certain, certain property. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance makes an additional appropriation to be provided for out of the proceeds of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, general revenue annual appropriation bonds of 2022, authorized by ordinance 2230, together with any interest earnings thereon, which will be applied to finance costs of constructing, renovating, replacing, repairing, improving and/or equipping certain facilities for the city's police and fire department, together with the costs of issuance thereof. It also approves of a purchase agreement between the City of Bloomington's Redevelopment Commission, the City of Bloomington, and CFC LLC for the purchase of a portion of the showers building complex for 8.75 million. All right, thank you. And as I mentioned, that will be referred to the regular session on December 21st.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2240 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? Sorry. Okay. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg? Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you. And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2240, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2226, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect changes due to the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bloomington and Local 2487 CBMC, ASME, and also a change affecting one additional job title. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 2226, which set the maximum 2023 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana. The changes reflect the cer, the recent execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bloomington and Local 2487 CBME, ASME, and also a change affecting one additional job title unrelated to the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. And this will also be referred to our last meeting of 2022, December 21st, our regular session next week. And with that, we now move toward the council schedule discussion. And Mr. Lucas, I do believe we have the 2023 annual council legislative schedule to probably discuss first.
Yes, before moving to that, just a quick note. Next week will be the last meeting of the year that you have scheduled. Other than the three items that were just read into the record, there will be, I think at the moment, the plan is to have three inter-local agreement resolutions come to the council, dealing with animal shelter operations, building code authority between the city and county, and justice assistance grant funds. Those are annual resolutions. And again, given the busy schedule, I'd encourage folks to reach out ahead of the meeting to the relevant staff members if you have questions on those, since next week will be busy. Beyond that, yes, the council has yet to adopt an annual schedule for 2023. Last week, the council was discussing two different options, A and B. Just a note that a revision to option B was made today and sent out in a packet addendum. The revision changed the departmental budget hearings in August to have those confined to one week, I believe, August 28th through the 31st. Previously, in, in option B, those were spread out across five days, across two weeks. And so this revision consolidates those back to the, the typical four, four-day approach. I believe that was the only change to either schedule since last week. Happy to answer questions or, or go into any more detail.
All right, very good. Councilmember Volin.
Make a motion. Is that in order? I was going to move to approve draft B of the 2023 annual council schedule, but I'd like to see the start time for departmental budget hearings be moved to 5:30 instead of 5:00 PM.
Just, just a note, I believe the schedule lists those start times at 6:00. I know the controller had communicated a preference to start them at, at 5:00, so your, your motion can still stand if you'd like to start those at 5:30. But just to note, the schedule has those listed at 6:00.
I mean, I don't mind 6:00, but I think to, to, 5:00 PM is too early, but 5:30 isn't unreasonable. And so I'll still maintain that, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Do we have any presentation that we need to discuss?
Just a brief statement. Again, like, departmental hearings are four, four and a half hours on average. If we start at 5:30, we'll definitely be done by 10:00 most nights. You know, I can't vouch for Public Works. You know, they, they love budget time, but that's just a dig. It's an unfair dig. But otherwise, I feel like if we're going to move budget time up, 6:00 has always felt arbitrarily, I mean, why not just meet at 6:30? So if we really are serious about getting out earlier budget week, since it's a, a heavy week, 5:30, I think, would be better than 5:00, but also better than 6:00. Thanks.
All right. Any questions regarding this motion?
Point of information, was the motion with respect to annual schedule B, I missed that, if you said that at the beginning. Was, was the motion made with respect to annual schedule B?
Schedule B.
Okay, thank you. I just missed that part.
And then the, and then the change on the time during?
Right. 5:30 PM for the budget instead of 5:00 or 6:00.
Again, any questions? All right, seeing no council questions, no one up on the screen. Anyone from the, we don't invite public comment in our matters of internal process, right?
I, I, just a, a quick comment from council staff. I, I just wanted to note, this will be a, a different approach that, from what the council's done in the past. So I, I would ask that you all give each other some, some patience and some understanding as we work through what'll be a new, a new approach to the council's legislative process. Staff will do our best to work through issues. If there are issues, we'll bring those to your attention, but just wanted to make that comment.
All right. So if things are broken, we can fix it, right? Councilmember Volin? Would you like to comment?
Yeah, just briefly. I, I appreciate the work that Councilmember Flaherty, and I believe Piedmont Smith did to put this together. It's an innovative approach. It resolves a lot of conflict that we've had this year. And it, it, I mean, I do support also the idea that Councilmember Flaherty has floated about enabling sort of automatic third readings. I'm not sure that any one member of council should be able to demand a third reading, even though I myself have recommended that. I took, I took some interest in the way that we amended the reasonable hour ordinance so that it required two members to close a meeting at midnight. In the same way, I feel like if we were to, to have two members requesting more time, that ought to be enough. But it's something we can discuss in the early 2023 when we discuss other, you know, many pressing issues of order and process. So with that, I urge my colleagues to support draft B. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo has a hand up.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the sponsors. I think that this is a very interesting approach, and I'm certainly willing to try it. Like Councilmember Volin, I've been sort of mulling over this idea of looking for a change in our procedure to protect, protect the minority. And, you know, that was suggested to be action taken in a second reading that would require unanimous consent. I'm still, as Councilmember Volin said, I'm still mulling over whether this is, should be required, you know, perhaps two members. So I look forward to discussing that later. I'm satisfied that we could make that decision at a later date, and so I'll be supporting the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Final comment? Councilmember Smith?
I just want to thank the people who worked on this, the sponsors. It's a great creative way to start the new year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just briefly to thank folks for their input and feedback as well. There's been some adjustments to this. And with respect to how to strike the right balance of, of flexibility by going to second reading, but also without a committee recommendation, but also having more time if, if members reasonably need it for an amendment or further consideration, or questions that can't be answered on, on, on the evening of its initial substantive consideration, I'm confident we can find the right balance and, and work on that collectively in the new year, likely in the form of a committee. But I would also just encourage, and I mentioned this via email to my colleagues, and sort of the adoption of a norm of, of reasonably granting folks time if requested, and while we work on that question. And I think that's been our general practice, but just wanted to speak in favor of that. Thank you.
All right, very good. Be ready to call a question. If the clerk would please call the roll on Plan B.
See, councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
All right, 900. And I do believe that concludes our scheduled discussion this evening. So do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Second.
Good night.